Good evening. Good evening. Thank you for attending the October 27, 2025, meeting at the Westerville Schools Board of Education. This evening's agenda will be displayed on the screen above us in the front of the room. Printed agendas are available for our guests outside, or you may find the agenda on your mobile device by connecting to the district's website at www.wcsoh.org. And I should say, when I mean outside, just around these bends out front. So you can click on the "Our District" link, select "Board of Education", and then follow the "Board Docs" link to our current meeting agenda. There will be one opportunity to address the board this evening in Agenda Item 5.01. There's a sign-up sheet located on the table as you entered the auditorium where those agendas are. Each speaker will have three minutes to address the board. A timer will be shown on this screen. And with that, Ms. Marshall, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Altman?
Here.
Mr. Hackelman?
Here.
Mrs. Valentine is absent. Mrs. Levan?
Here.
Mrs. Meyer?
Here. Would you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Next up are his district highlights and recognitions, and we don't have any this evening. So we'll be moving along to reports in 4.01. We have the report card, and welcome Mr. Cooper and Mr. Meisner.
Good evening, President Meyer, Vice President Levan, members of the board, Ms. Marshall, and Ms. Hamburg. Mr. Meisner will actually be joining me later on here with any questions that the board may have. All right, so bear with me as we work through the technology here and making sure that we have everything appropriately shared out there. I did share the presentation with the board, so if you have access to take a look at that, you have the paper copy there as well. So it's my pleasure to provide this report to you this evening on the most recent state report card for Westerville City Schools. The annual report card is one piece of district data that we review each year to reflect and consider any necessary changes and to give us a good measure of how things are going for our students and our staff. I do want to note that, as we do each year with this report, that in many cases, the data comes from a specific test on a specific day of the year. While we do consider and reflect on this data, we also collect multiple points of data regarding student progress to ensure our students are meeting state expectations and the standards at each grade level. So the 25-26 state report card continues to use the STAR rating system, which took the place of the letter grade system with the 21-22 state report card. Six component areas are rated: Achievement, Progress, Gap Closing, Graduation Rate, Early Literacy, and College, Career, Workforce, and Military Readiness. The College, Career, Workforce, and Military Readiness, which is oftentimes abbreviated CCWMR, is a newly rated component this year. While the component has been on the report card since 21-22, this is the first year for it to receive a STAR rating. So overall, Westerville did receive an overall 3.5 STAR rating by the state, which means we continue to meet the state's expectations. That 3.5 stars overall is down from an overall 4 STAR rating last year. In reviewing the details of our results on this report card, I will say the margin between our 3.5 stars this year and 4 stars is extremely thin. In the following slides, I'll actually share information with you about each component and just how close the district was to being at 4 stars overall. So this chart shows the six components that were measured on the report card. Calculating the overall score is not as simple as how many stars times the weighted percentage. So we can see there that achievement and progress are each weighted 25% of the overall score on the report card. And then the other four measures: Progress, Gap Closing, Early Literacy, sorry, Gap Closing, Early Literacy, Graduation, and the CCWMR rating are all 12.5% of the total weight. So one would think that you just take the number of stars, time the certain percentage, and then that would get you to your overall. But that actually is not how it's calculated. So within most of the components, there are multiple levels within each STAR rating that correspond to a decimal score that then contributes to an overall decimal score and a final STAR rating. So as you can see here, the 24-25 results, when you calculate the decimals corresponding to our ratings on each of those six measures, we have a decimal final score of 3.094. It's not 3.1 stars, though. You actually then take that 3.094 and you put that into the chart for the score ranges to then determine the overall rating of the district. And anything between the 2.625 and 3.124, technically, is 3.5 stars. So when we look at our score being 3.094, we were just shy of that 3.125 that's required for the overall 4 STAR rating. So .031 points, if you're counting at home with that math there, from being as an overall 4 STAR district. Moving forward, I do want to highlight again, the CCWMR is new for this year as we look at the calculations. Last year's overall calculation was actually done off of the five components with the weighted percentages that are displayed up there. So achievement and progress were 28.601% of the weighted percentage overall. The graduation rate, gap closing, and early literacy were 14.266% each going into the final. So when we look, though, at what our rating this year's scores and results with last year's calculations, we would have had a decimal rate of 3.286, which would have been the overall 4 stars. So if we take our same results this year and were to use last year's calculations, we would have been an overall 4 STAR district. So we would have maintained that 4 STAR rating as a district. So once again, the comparison between the two charts, just to give you an idea of just how close we were with that. Again, we're fully meeting state expectations, and I would argue that we're beyond the state expectations as the 4 stars is exceeding expectations. So 3 stars meets the expectations, 4 stars exceeding expectations. We were at 3.5 stars final rating. So the first component I want to take a look at here is the achievement rating. The district was 4 stars overall. We did exceed state standards with our 4 stars in this component. This component of achievement measures student performance on 20 different state assessments: the ELA, Math, Science, and Social Studies areas across the various grade levels from 3rd grade up through high school. Points are awarded based on the performance levels, with higher levels earning more points. The performance levels of limited and basic do not demonstrate proficiency, while the other levels of proficient, accomplished, advanced, and advanced-plus count as meeting or exceeding the state's expectations. So each student's performance level then contributes to the district's overall performance index. I want to highlight with our next slide here, just zooming in on that PI trend or with that performance index trend. So again, all of those results end up going into a formula that creates the performance index. And as you can see here, our five-year trend that is highlighted on the report card shows that we continue to make progress and improvement moving up on our performance index overall as a district. So in 2021, that report card showed us at a 70.7, followed by an 86.1, 87.9, 89.1, and now this year, 89.7. So we're very proud of the achievement that continues to move up over time. Within the next component, Progress, again, this was an area where we had 4 stars and exceeded the state's standards. The Progress measure evaluates student growth over time, regardless of the initial achievement level. This compares students' actual progress to their expected progress. So you may be familiar with the phrase "value-added" within the Progress component. The state uses an outside contractor to provide a predictive modeling approach to determine the levels where students should be able to perform based on their previous performance. This is a very complicated measure, as you might guess, and one that is pretty outside of our control for the expectation of what that measure should be as we don't know where students are expected to perform. The state does not give us that measure of where should they perform at the end of the year? What will you need to get to that value-added that's expected or exceeds state expectations? It's simply a measure that the state looks at after the fact, essentially, to tell us where we met progress and where we didn't meet progress. But at the end of the day, that Progress measure, again, we had 4 stars overall as a district and exceeded that state standard, which means our staff, our teachers, our students are doing a great job with their continual growth year to year.
I just kind of want to highlight that, Mark. So this one means that we are actually exceeding the expected growth for a year. So our kids are growing more than a year and a year, which is... This, to me, is a huge measure in terms of because it takes into account where the kids are starting, whereas achievement does not. So kudos to our staff for that one.
On the third component, Gap Closing, this focuses on closing achievement gaps among various student groups that are identified by the state. For example, race, economically disadvantaged, students with disabilities, and our English learners. Points are awarded based on the gap-closing performance. This component focuses on closing achievement gaps among various student groups. Points are awarded based on multiple indicators within this component. So specifically, when we look at one of those areas that are measured within the gap-closing component, one example is the comparison of subgroups within the district based on the state-determined goal, and in this case, it's English Language Arts Achievement. So the state looks at specifically all of our subgroups. And in the English Language Arts Achievement category, the gold circle represents the state's goal, and each bar represents a subgroup of our students and where they performed compared to the state goal. So as you can see there, this graph shows seven of our nine subgroups met or exceeded the state's goals for English Language Arts. Sorry, English Language Arts. So therefore, we got seven out of the nine points in the gap-closing measure overall for this specific measure of English Language Arts. Another example would be the Math Achievement. So again, you see the same nine subgroups here. And with this one, once again, that gold circle represents the state's goal, and each bar represents a subgroup of our students and where they performed compared to the state goal. So as you can see, that red bar at the top indicates that our white, non-Hispanic students performed well beyond that gold circle, which is the state expectation. And again, looking at each of our subgroups and where they performed. This graph shows eight of our nine subgroups met or exceeded the state's goals for math. So again, we would have gotten eight out of the nine potential points in this category. Another part of the gap-closing that I do want to discuss a bit here tonight is to take a moment to discuss another measure, being chronic absenteeism. So this is a measure that results in all or nothing points. You either earn all five points within this measure, or you earn zero points within this measure. And so in the 23-24 school year, our students distributed, or sorry, displayed a 17.9% chronic absenteeism rate. And I'll go into the definition of that in just a bit. But we earned all five points on the state report card in this measure last year. When we take a look at this year, the 24-25 school year, but this year's report card, it was at 17.8% chronic absenteeism rate. However, we earned zero points. So when we take a look at the state's chart here, the state actually has a moving measure on this. And so there's a goal that by the 2030-31 school year, that the chronic absenteeism rate will be at 5%. So when we look at last school year, that rate was 18.3%. And again, if you look at our result from last year, it was 17.9. So we met the goal and we got all five points. This year, that goal is 16.4%, that's highlighted there in the orange, and we had 17.8. So even though we did a touch better, we actually scored zero points for this measure. That will continue to change over time. I will note that districts can still meet the expectation. There is a caveat to these rules, as there are many cases. And in this case, if a district reduces their overall chronic absenteeism rate by 3% of their previous year's rate, then you also can meet the expectation. But we didn't decrease by that much either. So with that said, I do want to highlight a little bit more about this because one point in this area, so just a partial point in this area, perhaps saying, hey, the district maintained or actually did better than the previous year, so maybe earning a partial point for this, would have still resulted in 4 stars in the gap-closing component. But as I indicated earlier, there are different levels and different decimals that are earned for the overall. And we would have jumped a bit. We would have still been 4 stars, but we would have jumped into the next smaller decimal table and therefore would have been 4 stars overall as a district. So again, when I talk about how close we were to being 4 stars overall as a district, this is an indication of just how close that was. Just one point out of the five, for perhaps just maintaining our rate, would have gotten us to that point. So what is the definition of chronic absenteeism? So chronic absenteeism is defined as students who miss more than 10% of the total school hours. You would think for unexcused absences, but it's actually for excused or unexcused absences. So when we think about that, we fully recognize that many of our students may need to miss school for medical or illness reasons. Perhaps they have a fever. They can't come to school for 24 hours after that fever has broken. Family trips during the school year may also be very excellent educational experiences for our kids. And we know that those are all reasons as to why a student may be excused from school. Unfortunately, the state counts these absences in this measure against us. So missing just two school days per month, on average, results in a student being chronically absent. So this is an area where families, I will say, can really help the district by ensuring students are in school whenever possible. We absolutely want our students to be taken care of from their health and safety, and we want those educational experiences that a family may say, hey, I want to take my student to this country or this state and have them explore the educational opportunities that can be certainly gathered from a family trip like that. But we just want to note that this is one of those areas where, if possible, in scheduling routine doctor's visits, family trips, if those can happen outside the school day or during school breaks, that would be a huge help to us in helping specifically with this chronic absenteeism measure. So once again, just want to kind of highlight specifically one of those areas and how we did in that area, but how that area impacted our overall score. Looking at another component in this measure or in the overall report card was the graduation rate. We did have 4 stars and exceeded the state's standards for this area. Graduation rate assesses the percentage of students who graduate within four or five years. Points are awarded based on that graduation rate. The four-year graduation rate is 60% of the overall graduation rating. And five-year graduation rate is 40% of the graduation rating. So those are the weighted percentages that go together to create that district graduation rate rating. We did have a 93.9% graduation rate in the 24-25 school year. Last year, that rate was 94%. And these two rates, 93.9 and 94%, are the highest graduation rates the district has had in about 20 years. So again, our students are achieving. Thank you. It is definitely powerful information as to work that goes into supporting our kids every day, our teachers, our additional supports, our job coaches, our academic enrichment center. So much goes into helping our students to be successful in earning that diploma and being ready for their college, career, workforce, or military, if so be it that that is their choice. And I'll talk about that measure in just a bit. Moving on to the next component, Early Literacy. This is an area where we were rated 2 stars, and as the state would note there being an area where we need support. The Early Literacy component is an area where we absolutely have some work to do and we want to do to improve. I do want to note the very tight margin that kept us from 3 stars for this component. So the overall calculation, when you dig into all the technical documents that the state has when we look at, the earned calculation of this measure was 67.5%. We earned 67.5% when you look at our 3rd grade reading proficiency, which was a 40% of the weighted measure, promotion to 4th grade, which was 35% of the measure, and improving K3 literacy, which was 25% of the measure. That's how you get to the 100% of the overall measure. And we earned a calculation of 67.5. The mark for 3 stars in this category is 68%. So it's obvious there's no rounding up happening with things, but 67.5%, so we are .5% off of being 3 stars in this specific area. And as you can guess, that 3 stars would have knocked us up once again to an overall 4 stars for the district. So what is that .5% difference in this area? I would like to note that the state did move in this 50%, sorry, 40% 3rd grade reading proficiency. When we look at that reading proficiency, there is the 3rd grade ELA assessment. And so it's not the overall English Language Arts Assessment, but they actually look at the sub-score of reading. So there is a reading sub-score within that assessment. And that benchmark is 50 points. To get 50 points to be able to meet the benchmark and be proficient in that reading measure specifically. Last year, the state's mark was 48. And so once again, this is an area where the state has moved the measure for us. Forty-four of our students, of the 1,121 students that were tested, scored a 49. And the most recent results with last year's expectations would have resulted in 3 stars on this measure had 13 students of the 44 earned that sub-score. So if they earned one more point, 13 students out of 1,121 that were tested, then we would have earned that 3-star rating. So once again, very tight, very close margins of being able to be at that next level. Another item that we are continuing to review in this measure when we look at that improving K3 literacy. I'll skip over the promotion to 4th grade, but quite honestly, we earned all 35% there. 99.9% of our students were promoted from 3rd grade to 4th grade this past year. The improving K3 literacy is another area that we are tracking closely. We are continuing to review the assessment that is used for this. So the district chooses its assessment for this specific measure. We currently use the I-Ready literacy assessment. And that measure is used then that we report to the state for these results of this 25%. So it is a self-reported measure. There are multiple assessments that can be used for this measure, and there may be some better options than the I-Ready as it is intended to be a comprehensive measure of the grade-level expectations. And the point of the I-Ready is to help our teachers to identify areas where individual students may need the most amount of support as we go through the year. So in envisioning this, our students come in, let's say, 1st grade. They come in, they're assessed in the first week of school as to where they are on the I-Ready, and it is measuring their standards for the entire 1st grade year. So we're talking about students who are 6 years old coming in and demonstrating that they have met all the expectations for the whole 1st grade year. So it's a great assessment for us from a diagnostic standpoint to be able to know where our students are. But it's not so great of a measure to use when we're talking about the state saying, hey, we're going to grab that and say, oh, all these students are off track. And one would expect that most students are off track coming into 1st grade, that they're not meeting end-of-year 1st grade expectations. There are assessments that are out there that we want to continue to look at. We are talking with some of our similar districts, as well as some of the other districts in the area, that to determine what assessments they are using, not just from a standpoint of, hey, what assessment helps you to show the accurate amount of students on track to start their 1st grade or 2nd or 3rd grade year, kindergarten for that matter, but really trying to find a measure that is helpful to our teachers in understanding where our students are and how we can support them to meet grade-level expectations. So this is one that, you know, one could probably argue about the various assessments that are there. At the end of the day, this measure counts on the district report card based off of our results on this specific assessment. I also want to note that with that as well, Ms. Toma, Ms. Kate Toma will be presenting information after my presentation here tonight. It'll be a little shorter for you, but it'll be all about MTSS. And so we use the assessment results for our I-Ready assessments to help us determine students that need additional support in addition to what's happening in the classroom. So more about that on the MTSS measures in just a bit. So what assessments maybe are out there? As we consider some assessments to use, there are a certain number of assessments that are approved by the state. I-Ready is one of them. We also got word recently with some state legislative changes. And as you can see here, a note dated from the state's website of September 3, that there will be upcoming changes to district and school reading diagnostic assessments. I-Ready is one of those that we currently use. So as it states here, beginning in the 26-27 school year, that's next year, the Ohio Department of Education and Workforce is required to make significant changes to its approved list of reading diagnostic assessments. Under upcoming changes to Ohio law, the department must approve up to five reading diagnostic assessments aligned with the academic standards for each grade from kindergarten to grade 3 by June 30 of 2026. So with that said, we must wait until the state approves up to five, so it may be one, it may be three, up to five assessments restricted there, that they will tell us what we can use that then contributes to this measure. With that said, they have until June 30, so beyond the end of this school year. And the district must implement one of those five approved assessments, if there are five, a few months later to start the next school year as in mid-August of 2026. So this is going to be a very tight timeline for us. It is one that we will be exploring various assessments that can currently be used and anticipate potentially, hopefully, they'll make that decision well before June 30. We don't always get that time to consider it, but it may be a quick decision if that is a later decision that happens. And we'll have to move forward quickly in purchasing potentially new assessments for our students.
And Mark, how much funding do we anticipate getting to purchase those assessments?
I will talk about unfunded mandates later. But certainly, it is one of those.
But we have a contract with our current vendor, right? So I mean, that's a piece of, just to point out the types of things that we're trying to deal with to make sure we have a good assessment for our students and for our teachers. At the same time, we're under a contract, and we are expecting zero funding to pay for that.
Right, that is correct. To our knowledge, there is no funding that comes with this potential change for school districts. And again, it may or may not be a measure that is helpful for us looking at our students locally and what our students need and what our teachers believe is useful to them as they work with our students throughout the year. So the final measure, as I noted earlier, this is a newly rated component, the CCWMR, College, Career, Workforce, and Military Readiness. We did have a 2-star rating as our initial rating for this this year, which again, is noted as the state of needing support. This area does assess the percentage of students who meet the post-secondary readiness components. I will say, as a district, we fully believe in ensuring our students are ready for college, a career, the workforce, or the military. And quite honestly, as we look at our portrait of a graduate that has existed and been a big community effort for our students, it exists because of our belief in preparing our students for their future beyond graduation. We also believe that all students who have demonstrated readiness should count in this measure. Unfortunately, many students who were indeed ready for their path ahead were not accounted for in the state's measure. So as we look here, we do have some graphs. The blue graphs are specifically areas that count, according to the state, as measures that will qualify a student to be considered ready for college, career, the workforce, or the military. The state looks at 11 specific areas. So the grade-out areas are reported, but they do not count toward the measure. So students who receive an honors diploma, an industry-recognized credential, dual enrollment credit, the ACT or SAT if they're remediation-free, which you could see there as one of our highest-performing areas for our students. They must have a qualifying score on three or more AP or IB exams, military enlistment, apprenticeship with acceptance being 18 years or older, pre-apprenticeship completion, apprenticeship completion. pre-apprenticeship completion, apprenticeship completion, the achieved proficiency on three or more technical assessments in a single career pathway, and finally, the Ohio Means Job Readiness Seal along with two hundred and fifty hours of work-based learning within that job. So to talk through a little bit of scenarios here, first off, military enlistment. I do want to note that there were some concerns across several districts that we've talked with, as we did have some students that enlisted in the military. With that said, the state requires that we prove that the student has indeed enlisted in the military to get their military seal for part of their graduation requirements. However, the state actually requires that we report that in a different platform, in a different area to count for this measure. And so all those students absolutely did enlist, they absolutely have the proof of that, we did not have the report in the right place. And again, this is a new measure, so lesson learned on some things from this. I will also note here that the state has, as part of these eleven areas, the apprenticeship with acceptance being eighteen years or older. So our students must be eighteen, they also, this is post-high school, so this is if they've graduated. So one question is, how exactly do you report a measure of students who are eighteen and have graduated when you are to be reporting it at the end of the school year? So obviously, there would be a very tight window where this would have to be reported within. Also, the apprenticeship completion there, to our knowledge, is not one student across the state who has made this measure, because completing an apprenticeship happens well after high school. Most apprenticeships are two or four years. And so there is no way for a student to meet this measure. The state has recognized that, and they've shared that with our college career readiness staff. And specifically then, they, I hope they make some, some changes. I will say, Matt Meisner, who may be out there now, and Matt has actually shared with me that they have multiple conversations with the state, multiple college career readiness advisors and directors and supervisors and coordinators. They have had conversations with the state in advance of these measures and did share these kind of tidbits of information as to potential changes. Unfortunately, there were zero changes made from the feedback that they gave to the state. So now that the results are in on some things, my hope is that we certainly hear from the state some potential changes that do occur in this area. But I want to highlight a specific scenario that was pretty common as we looked at students who did not meet one of these areas in particular. So one of our students that we actually had in the district who did not qualify of being college career-ready had a three-point-six-five GPA, successfully completed two business pathway courses, but in the state's eyes, you have to have three, successfully completed two AP courses, but in the state's requirements, you have to have three, and successfully completed two college credit-plus courses, earning six college credits, but in the state's requirements, you have to have twelve college credits. So had the student taken one more AP course instead of a college course, or two more college courses instead of the two AP courses, they would have counted on the measure. So this scenario was fairly common as we reviewed students who did not count on the measure. We are hopeful that the state will review these issues many districts face with this measure and ensure that students who are truly ready for their path beyond high school are accounted for in this measure.
And I just want to echo what Mark pointed out earlier, that we did give this feedback, the superintendent's groups as well, I know Matt's group, we all gave this feedback on the front end. We're very fortunate in Westerville to be able to offer college credit-plus courses on our campus, and I shared with the board previously, we had four thousand three hundred and seventy-two credits earned last year. And so part of the reason that number is so high is because we do have college credit-plus on campus. A lot of our kids choose to take a mixture, whereas in some districts, they don't offer CCP in-house. If a kid wants to take it, they have to drive themselves to a college campus, and so they might have more AP classes because that's all that's available. So we're actually giving more opportunities, diversifying those experiences for our kids, and getting penalized on the measure as a result.
Can, can I just repeat that? Because we're providing opportunities, we got penalized, right? Because we have different tracks, CCP, AP, IB. So when students are picking and choosing from that menu of options, it actually hurts us here.
That is correct. So because of the robust options that are for our kids, and the college career ready, or CCP courses are an expectation of the state. Now, we do not have to offer those on campus. We do offer those on campus because we believe that it really will have more students who participate and students who can earn college credit to prepare them for those next steps. The AP course offerings as well, same idea, some advanced coursework to prepare students for their future. But a student who takes a combination, as we see with this example, which was pretty common of our students who did not meet the measure, we see here that that actually did penalize us. And at the end of the day, I would still support and fully encourage that our students take the selection of courses that fit them and prepare them for the future, even though that may result in a two-star rating for our district in this area. And I have a feeling that some others feel the same way.
And Mr. Cooper, while you're on that, could you clarify that if this is not weighted on a cumulative score? That example you just provided?
Mm-hmm.
That, for instance, is not weighted, like, as a cumulative score, correct?
When you say weighted, are you speaking to?
How is, how are all those, when you're putting that into the rating system, how is that actually weighed in comparison to everything else out there looking at for that student?
Yeah, so this student would not count at all for the measure. So when we look at that two-star rating, this student didn't count in the rating. So if multiple students who were taking combinations, if the state allowed for two AP and two college courses as opposed to three or four, if they allowed a combination of a certain amount, that would be one suggestion absolutely we would make to the state. My guess is that we did make such suggestions to the state because we knew that students do take a combination of the courses to prepare them. Our hope is that parents, in meeting with their students and talking through what pathway they want to take and how parents can encourage their kids to make the right choices of courses, and that they meet with their teachers and their counselors, that we create the best path for that student, for that individual student. And so with that said, again, it may not meet the state measure, but we're confident that this student is ready for college, career, indoor, the workforce, or military.
And I know when you have Mr. Meisner come up, he's very passionate about this. I'm sure he'll, he'll talk more about it. But I know our pathways were designed intentionally to incorporate different types of courses. And so, again, we've done what we think is a good thing for our kids, but the state's not recognizing. I would argue that that's a more robust experience than a kid just taking random classes versus in a pathway where they're linked into an interest area to prepare them.
So many things that have gone through here, many measures, many things learned. We certainly have areas, and we will own the fact that we will never be perfect with our kids, we will never be a hundred percent in everything. And so we will continue to strive to improve and support our kids in preparing them for their future. We will work with our families to ensure that they feel that their students have what they need to be successful. But at the end of the day, in closing, I do want to note that despite the many challenges we face, whether that is a continued loss in state funding, whether that is unfunded state mandates that require the district to continue to make ongoing changes to curriculum and operations of the district, or whether we look at the challenge of continually changing metrics on how our schools are measured, that WCS, this district remains a strong district, serving our students, families, and community. We believe that all students are capable of learning at high levels, and it is our collective job in this community, not just the district, but this entire community, to help them, every one of our students, to reach their full potential. For some students, it may take some time, it may take more time, it may take additional support or alternative methods of learning. But every individual student in this district is important to us, and we want to make sure that they know that they belong here. Our student success is all due to the teachers, the bus drivers, the paraprofessionals, the secretaries, the food service workers, our custodians, our administrators, and every individual volunteer and staff member working with our district, and their families to help every student grow and feel like WCS is truly where they belong. And so with that, I'll take any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. I think this is really reflective, right, of how impossible it is to compare where we were ten years ago to where we are here because of just the changes that they made in just one year, right? And so when we look back and look at, I don't know, two thousand and fifteen, it could look drastically different, and it will look different next year, too. So I think it's a really good reminder that this is a snapshot, it's one data point, and I know we're going to talk about more data points here in a minute, but it's just something that I've continued to hear out in the community is, let's look back, and why is it not adding up? And so this is really why.
Yeah. Changing metrics, changing assessments. Again, I noted earlier here, another assessment that may or may not change because the state will tell us what we can choose from an approved vendor list. So tests and metrics and measurements and expectations and goals, they all change over time. And so it's very difficult to look back even a few years. Again, that star rating went into place in twenty-one, twenty-two. That was just a couple of years ago. Before that, there were letter grades. Before that, there were certain ratings of components. Before that, it was designated as districts with distinction or certain expectations that were met or not met, the, the performance indicators. And so if you look back just ten years within this district, across the state for that matter, I should say, the report card has changed drastically.
Thank you. I just have, you brought it up again, so I have a follow-up question to, circling back to this mandate about how we may be changing, we may have five approved assessments. And so I'm wondering, could, and you may not know this, but how much could that potentially cost us if we needed to switch to a new assessment? And I do believe, it was already mentioned by Ms. Hamburg, I can't imagine we'll actually get any funding to be able to do that, but it could be wrong.
Yeah, you know, it would depend on the specific assessment. And so right now, there are about twelve to fifteen assessments that you can choose from. So again, the state will determine which those are, and potentially, once the state decides which five, or potentially two, or even one, my guess is that those assessment vendors may choose to change their prices as well. And so that's a possibility, a real possibility. So it is really hard to know what, what exactly that number is going to be.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. I really appreciated this. I felt like it was very informative, and that was a lot of math, and I think very difficult to follow. But I'm going to ask you a very loaded question, so bear with me.
Sure.
So I think, just given what you've explained to us, when we look at a component area like college, career, workforce, military readiness, which we know is new, as you've mentioned, and we know that our district, for example, we're only able to give kids these career, technical career opportunities because of these external partnerships with Columbus and Delaware, and that's how they're able to gain these very important experiences while they're in our buildings. Would you say that it is, I don't want to say impossible, because we keep saying it's very extremely difficult, for districts like ours to earn those five stars because of these constant changes to the measures? And I think we just wouldn't be fairly rated in a category like this because, as you just shared, that goalpost keeps changing. All these factors are at play here. How, because I think a lot of times when folks are online and they're seeing, they didn't get the five star, they didn't get the four star. But again, you have a very specific example like this, this is a new category that was added, we know absenteeism was also added. How can districts like ours, is it fair to expect us to earn a five star in these areas when we know that these changes just keep coming down the pipeline?
Yeah, great questions, and I'll give Matt Meisner an opportunity to respond if he has anything to add to this. First off, I would say, I think, you know, for example, when we look at some districts around us, some high-performing districts that maybe even had four or five stars in the college career readiness component, some of those districts offer CCP because they're required to by law, but they don't offer them on campus as we do. And so students who may be interested in a college course may not take it because they have to drive somewhere to take that course. And so they might take an AP course or additional AP courses because of that. And so they meet the measure because of that. But one could argue, is that what's best for the student? That they took additional AP courses that may or may not be related to their career path, because really, that was their only option, that they didn't have the choice to travel off-campus for things. Another point that you mentioned on there, just overall, is it fair to, to think that districts can get here? I think there absolutely are measures in place because we want to continue to improve. I think there's absolutely validity in some of these pieces of data that we want to continue to look at and reflect on and determine, how can we get better in serving our students and ensuring that they are prepared for the future? With that said, I think it, you know, there are questions about specifically what those measures are. These are not locally determined measures. They are determined by the state themselves as to what they believe are measures that are important to them. And as we can see, there may be some measures that we say, hey, look, we, we have certain offerings in our district that we want to continue to offer those options for our kids. And it may come at the expense of having a lower star rating on something, but we believe locally that is what's best for our kids. And so, fair question, there are certainly some things we can take and learn from, and we will own that. I don't think any staff member out here is saying, yeah, I'm just going to dismiss all that, and, and we'll just move on and see what happens next year. We are absolutely owning this data and taking it and learning from it and saying, what can we do differently? But also, at the end of the day, some of these measures, we might say, you know, at the end of the day, that's not important to us because we recognize by doing some of these things that are best for our kids, we might not meet that measure. Mr. Meisner, I don't know if you have anything else more to add on that career technical piece?
Yeah, good evening. I just wanted to add, yeah, certainly, we can get to a five star. I don't think that that's impossible. But I will say, just talking to my colleagues across the region, across the state, what we offer in Westerville is sort of like the gold standard, right? A mixture of IB, AP, CCP. Our kids, second part of that measure, and Mark Cooper and I talked about this, is actually following up on where our kids at after they've graduated from high school. That does not factor into the report card, that's a report-only measure, but we exceed the state average in every single one of those categories. More of our kids go on and enroll in college two years after they've graduated by fifteen percent more than the state average. Our kids graduate with a college degree within six years, which is the measure, about ten percent higher than the state average. Our kids are enlisted and attending Ohio Technical Centers, about five percent more than the state average. So we are sending our kids off to do great things. And that example that Mr. Cooper shared, this is a student I dug into, this student right now is attending Ohio State University, they're in a degree program, they're being successful, they're also employed part-time. So that tells you that our kids, even though they're not meeting one of these measures, they are going off and doing great things after they graduate from us. And Ms. Levan, I wanted to answer your question about the, because I think I know where you were going with the, how do they factor into the measure? So student factors in once they've hit one of these triggers. They don't count for multiples. So let's say we have a student that gets twelve college credits, they also do a pre-apprenticeship, they also complete an industry-recognized credential. They show up in all the, the graphs that Mr. Cooper just showed you, but they actually only count one time on the report card. Once they've hit one measure, that's it. We don't get two, three, four points for kids that are factored in. So that student did not factor in in any one of those categories, therefore, they didn't equate on our report card. Yeah.
So I had a follow-up question to that. So I see our Portrait of a Graduate, right? And I see social, emotional wellness, collaboration. And then I turn over to how the state assesses what a portrait of a graduate should be. And I don't see social, emotional wellness, collaboration. So, you know, I'm, I'm sort of at a loss here. When we, when we put these things together, that the community decides upon, that outside groups decide upon this, what makes a solid graduate, or it's one of our graduates, sorry, college, career, workforce, and military-ready, these are the things, and the state says, but we want these things, and they don't show up on a metric. How do we, what's our, what's our objective to balance that? Or is, is, to my colleague, is that just kind of always a little out of reach for us because there's no assessment point, no data point on here for that?
Yeah, great question, and I think you alluded to some, potentially, some of the answers, and that is, you know, really what our board expects for our district. You are the elected officials that help to guide our administrative team on what you feel and know that our community wants. The Portrait of a Graduate is a great point that you make here because our community developed that Portrait of a Graduate. We had multiple business members, we had parents, we had staff members who contributed to this Portrait of a Graduate just a few years back. This is still relatively new. And so with that said, we chose as a community what we wanted for our students when they graduate from Westerville City Schools. Schools. And so these may be some skill sets, and I would argue are some skill sets, that aren't necessarily measured through an assessment. And so with that said, I think it's really just taking in the results and saying, okay, here are the results. What can we take and learn from these results? In which of these areas do we feel like, hey, we're doing the right thing for our community? And we can just recognize that that may not come through a four or five star in certain areas. But at the end of the day, we are still performing extremely well. Our staff members and our kids are doing a great job.
And just to shift gears, because I know this data doesn't, the state looks at this, their objectives in kind of a vacuum, and pick out the data points that they like, and then they show them to us, and we go, okay. But there is one here with the English Language Arts Achievement that I wanted to just touch on real briefly.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, my chart here is black and white, so I'm not sure what sections we're talking about. But it looks like we have two demographics in particular that we, that are a little outside of where we wanted to be in terms of meeting those objectives. I'm curious if that's a resource issue, an allocation issue? Is it, I mean, I know our demographic is extremely diverse, and I can't see which ones those necessarily are. But I was curious what our plan was, maybe in particular with these English Language Arts learners, to close that gap a little bit, of what that might look like.
Yeah, good question. And actually, as we look at these specific measures, so the English Language Arts, if I'm looking in the same spot as you on that assessment, are you looking at the bottom graph, the bottom bar?
Yeah, so it looks like this for me.
So I'm sorry, I saved on some color ink. But I will note that that specific bottom bar correlates to our students with disabilities. And so they didn't quite meet the mark. They were very close in meeting that gold circle. And then the other area, that green bar, which is the fourth bar down, is our Asian or Pacific Islander group that did not quite meet the benchmark expected from the state's goals. So our students who are English learners did meet the benchmark that's expected by the state for that area. They are noted, it's a little hard to see, but I believe it's that beige line, third, fourth, fifth, sixth bar down on that list.
So our students with disabilities and our Asian or Pacific Islander learners.
Correct.
Is that a matter of resources for us? Is it a matter of curriculum? I mean, what are we looking at here to help close both those gaps?
Yeah, good question. I think from the general education standpoint, I think it may just be looking at where those students did not show performance. I think from the students with disability standpoint, we're constantly looking at that measure as to how can we better support our students. It is a big job. Our teachers that do that work have a very big job in supporting each of our students with disabilities. And I think it's, you know, again, it's very close to that measure. I think year to year, we're really looking at, how can we just get them to that point of being proficient in the state's eyes? On the math assessment, I think our only area that did not meet also was just our students with disabilities. I say just, but that was the only of the 11 different categories there, or nine different categories there. And so, once again, from a resource standpoint, we have seen a growing number of students with disabilities across our district, and that is where we have continually added staff over the last few years. When we talk about an area of staff increasing, you may see an overall reduction of enrollment across the district. But when we see our student population of students with disabilities that show that they need more intensive support, we do add staff members. And I believe we've added about 20 to 30 staff members over the last few years, specifically in supporting our growing enrollment. It has grown by leaps and bounds the number of students with disabilities.
Has the state raised a bar on what is expected of students with disabilities? Is that a part of, like, us trying to close that gap, or has that standard remained relatively the same, and we're just, we're just trying to have the resources necessary?
So depending on the assessment, yes, some of those measures are continually changing. So when I spoke to that third-grade reading sub-score, our students with disabilities are taking that third-grade test. And so what, 48 was a passing measure last year for proficiency in reading. It is now a 50. And so that benchmark is continually growing. And so we will continue to work to meet that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I add one thing, Mr. Cooper? I'm back here.
I'm sorry.
In the dark.
Where did that voice come from?
I know.
Like.
I'm just going to add one thing to your question about the portrait of a graduate. So every single day, I talk to businesses in our community. We're trying to fill the employment gap. We're trying to get kids and young people into careers. And no business ever has asked me what the web exam scores are for a student. No business ever has asked me, did you report their military enlistment in two different platforms on the state website correctly? But what they do ask me is, can the kids solve problems? Can they communicate? Can they collaborate? So I just want to make that point, that hopefully, the state will also listen, because I know our business partners, I've got some of them fired up about this as well, that they're going to be providing input to the state to say, what you're measuring is not even what we're looking for. If the end goal is that our kids are employed, what are we, what are we measuring to make sure that they're ready to do that? It's not their web exam scores. It's not where their military enlistment's gone. It's, can they do those six skills that we have in our portrait?
I think that touches on the social, emotional skills, right? Like, being able to collaborate with somebody, work in a team, and work with difficult people, or, you know, flex when those people have different learning styles or work styles.
I have a question about the assessments, you know, that we have to, it's going to be up to five, right?
Yes.
How will we vet those and make a decision? Can you talk that through?
Yeah, good question. Again, this will be a conversation that we have throughout this year, as we explore, what are the assessments that are out there being used, that could be potentially one of those five, or again, maybe just two or three that are accepted. But then from there, we actually, again, Kate Toma will be presenting here in just a few minutes, and speaking specifically to our MTSS work and how we utilize that data. But I'll ask Kate if you can kind of speak to that in just a bit as well, on the assessment.
But just, just so, I just want to make it absolutely clear. We're just looking at these other assessments. We're not going to make a decision until we hear back from the state.
Yes, absolutely. We cannot make a decision until we know what the state is going to approve for those assessments. Hopefully, again, it'll be well before that June 30th deadline. There have been moments where the decision has not been made until into, past the deadline, I should say. And again, it puts us into motion very quickly in having to make a fast decision.
And I would just add to probably state the obvious, but it's also an extra stressor on our staff then, as they're trying to start the year and trying to learn a new system. And so that cramp turnaround time that they've given themselves a very long window to decide what the assessments will be, they're giving us a very short window for our staff to try to do that, as they're already busy trying to form relationships and do all the things that we need to do at the beginning of the school year.
Excellent point. And I think about the professional development that's needed to assess and learn a new assessment potentially that the staff members haven't been using before. So absolutely, there are very tight timelines on things. And so we will, we will just continue to do what we can to ensure that we have measures in place to support our staff, so that our staff members can continue to support our kids.
I just want to underscore one other thing you said. So excused absences also count towards those 10 days, right?
10%, just to check that, yeah.
Oh, thank you, 10%. But so do excused absences count towards those 10 days in law, right? That, and then you get called into the office to put forward a plan of how you're going to make sure your students, so if you're taking a vacation, and you miss five, seven days, and then your child gets sick, or you have a medical thing, whatever it is, that still counts towards those 10 days of being absent?
Yeah, thank you. And I'm sorry, I corrected you a little early on that one. But yes, the 10%, and with the measure for chronic absenteeism is 10%. I think you're maybe speaking to some of the House Bill 410 from a few years back on the days and the number of hours. And so along with that, yes, to your point, any absence counts as an absence. With that said, the state is also looking at some additional requirements for districts to put in certain interventions. So the reporting requirement to the state will not have to happen on certain things, because the state, I don't know if has the resources to support what they need to support. And so more of the expectations are coming on districts of intervening earlier. And so part of the state's expectations to go to that 5% chronic absenteeism number by 2030, '31 school year, is that they are putting more measures on local school districts to have to intervene earlier. And so we will apologize in advance, parents that are out there, for the communication coming home. In many cases, again, we recognize, if your child is sick, we want your child to stay home. If you are going through a family experience for a trip that is truly educational, we want you to, wherever possible, schedule that outside of the school year. But we also recognize the value of that, and the right for a parent to make a decision on what they feel is best for their kid. In the same token, we recognize that we will have to communicate with you more, because the state is putting that requirement on local districts to communicate more frequently and earlier, because they're at risk of hitting that 10% mark on the overall chronic absenteeism for the year.
Just to follow up with that, this is a very specific question, but I'm just, so if a student takes a college visit to be college and career-ready?
Correct.
As a junior or senior?
That is correct.
That counts towards their chronic absentee statistic?
Yes.
I just wanted to make sure I was understanding that correctly.
That excused absence for a college visit does count against them. And again, if they then reach 10% of the school year. So to put that into perspective, about 175 days in service for kids, 178. So if they miss 18 days
Yep.
Worth of hours. So if a student misses a half-day for a doctor's appointment, that's a half-day toward the overall 18 days for the school year. So if you take two days per month on average, that would be meeting the expectation, or beyond the expectation to then count as a chronic absentee student.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I actually have, I think, one other question. Hold on, I have to get back to a particular slide here. Well, let me just ask this big question. So private schools, non-public charter schools, where, you know, students receive voucher money to go, not the same report card, correct?
So there isn't, yeah, there isn't a report card.
Okay.
To that point.
Thank you. Yep, thanks.
I might just ask if we're able to, I know we post the whole board meeting up online, but I'm wondering if we can cut this snippet out and just post it, so people can, like, if they're looking to try to understand the report card, and they weren't able to come tonight, they can go straight there and just get the information and listen to this?
Yeah.
Oh, great, thanks.
I'm sorry.
And I don't have a question, but I really do just want, because I think a lot of times we get too bogged down on the negatives and the, you know, what-ifs. But I think we really should applaud ourselves that we've been able to make progress and improve on addressing chronic absenteeism since COVID-19. We know right now the needs of our kids, just based on the demographic of our student populations, every child is not the same. And so whether it's putting in place interventions, or working with parents to meet the needs of that whole child, we're really doing everything that we can as, to make sure that that kid is able to thrive in the classroom and outside of the classroom. So I just wanted to really let you know I appreciate this presentation, but just in the grand scheme of things, that's a huge accomplishment, I would say.
A lot of things to, certainly, a lot of things to celebrate throughout this. And we could certainly cherry-pick the data, and just want to show you the great things, you know, just as some may choose and cherry-pick the data to show the negative things. From our standpoint, we take all things. We look at everything. We own the data. We take what we can learn from the data. We also recognize the pieces of data that just don't fit with what we expect for the students in Westerville City Schools.
Thank you. Really appreciate our continual improvement mentality, too.
Sure.
There's no other questions. We're going along to MTSS report, which I'm hoping Ms. Toma will also give us the full explanation of this acronym, what it means.
Good evening, everybody. First, I will tell you what MTSS is, but I'm going to back up to the question about how will we choose which diagnostic assessment. We would do that work with teachers. So if you remember me coming back last year with our very short timeline for K through second grade ELA, Required Adoption, do you remember that? I can see some of my friends that were in that work right here. We had about this much time to make a really big decision, and we pulled it off thanks to the blood, sweat, and tears of the teachers. We would do the same thing, but it is a pretty unrealistic ask for a teacher to be able to turn around and start that in August, and know what any of that data means if we have to change system. In addition to that, we no longer can compare what we have, because now we've changed it. So I did want to take the time to answer that. And obviously, as we start researching, which we've already done by talking to other local districts, just trying to learn more about what other people are doing, and if they're seeing some of those same things, we're collecting all of that. But I try to do as much front-loading so that when teachers come, I've got it all laid out for them to digest it, because those meetings happen after the school day, and they're tired, and I'm tired. And so we try to give them all the tools they need to make the best collaborative decisions we can. So that was that part. All right, I'm going to shift to MTSS. MTSS is exactly what you've been reading about in Charlie Boss's amazing newsletters that she sends out. MTSS stands for Multi-Tierred Systems of Support, and it is our way to provide support to students who have an academic, behavioral, or social-emotional need. So I know you were asking about, what does it look like when we're talking about social, emotional, and behavioral pieces? And that's all encompassed within MTSS. So when we see data like Mr. Cooper just presented, we dig into it, and we start saying, is there something we can do to support this student in a different way? And so that's what I'm here to talk to you a little bit about tonight. I know Mr. Cooper touched on this, but, and anybody that's been in any of my MTSS meetings always hears me say, we're talking about every classroom, every student, every single day. So whether or not they're in one of our formalized interventions, or they're just flying into chemistry class, we're still wrapping our arms around them, doing the best we can to meet students who both need enrichment, or possibly students that need reteaching and support to understand those standards. Our students are reaping the benefits of the collaborative work that we're doing across PK to 12. So we've worked on our educational framework, specifically talking about the safe and inclusive environments, student-centered learning, and clear evidence and application of learning. MTSS really hits those pieces and parts in conjunction with the portrait of a graduate. That work doesn't stop just because we're talking about perhaps data and those pieces. It's all combined together. So our work directly connects to those pieces and allows us to monitor whether or not we need to make adjustments to our instruction. Also, you might remember, in July of 2024, we shared our strategic plan. So this was a group of stakeholders that came together to kind of lay out where we headed as a district. And part of priority two, which was student-centered learning, was Objective 2.1, which calls for us to implement a multi-tiered system of support in Westerville City Schools. And so since we had that charge, we've been working really hard from PK to 12 to say, what does this look like? And being newer to secondary, boy, have my eyes been wide open with scheduling and graduation requirements, and just the complexities of what it looks like to have a multi-tiered system of support in secondary schools. And I can't be more excited about the collaborative work at the secondary side of the house, because it doesn't really exist. Like, you can't just go search that on Google and be like, oh, here you go, this is great, because it's too complex. There are layers and layers. And I would never say we have it right yet, but I will say that the teachers are committed to doing this work. The administrators are committed to doing this work. And there's a lot of energy around, how do we work together to make sure that we're meeting every student's needs? Additionally, in August, like, just a couple months ago, the state released Ohio's Integrated Multi-Tierred System of Support. So they put out this infographic. There is a webpage on ODU's website. It luckily matches everything we're doing, so yay, we don't have to change anything. So that's always exciting. But it talks about all of the components that go into a multi-tiered system of support. And so most of those things were already underway as we started into the year, although you'll see in a second, I'm going to talk about, multi-tiered systems of support don't just happen overnight. They take a long time. They take a long time to fully implement pieces and parts. And I think that we work on a lot of things, we work really, really hard. But if you try to do too much, you don't do any of it well. And so we've tried to chunk it into manageable pieces and parts and then try them and learn what worked, what didn't work. Use data to decide, is this something that's benefiting students or do we need to adjust? One misconception that I want to make sure I clearly state tonight is that MTSS serves all students. It is not just for students who might be struggling in a classroom. It is truly intended to meet the needs of every learner that walks through our doors. So whether we are extending learning and challenging in a higher-thinking way or whether we're going back to basic reading intervention, every student deserves to have what they need in our classrooms, and that's what we're here to work for. So when we talk about multi-tiered system of support, I really want to make sure that our gifted families know they're included in this, that our students with disabilities, our EL families, everyone is a part of this work, and it's our job to figure out how do we make sure that we're meeting their needs. These are our goals for this year. Again, across PK to 12, by the end of this school year, we'll have structures in place to support students at Tier One, Two, and Three. So part of MTSS is kind of using data to decide. Tier One is what 80% of our students, if I go back to this, 80% of our students should be successful with just your general Tier One instruction. 15%-ish should be probably within Tier Two. Those are students that may be needing just a little bit more support or perhaps a quick intervention and then they are able to pick up Tier One skills. And then Tier Three is that intensive level of intervention or support. So it's really targeted to what a student might need. So we're working to have those pieces and parts at every tier across PK to 12. We've also embedded micro-professional development on Universal Design for Learning. So that's a lot of words to say basically what we're trying to do is look at how we've instructed students forever, right? But those students are not the same students. As we just talked about, all of these amazing opportunities our kids have, which is wonderful, but students have changed, the world has changed, and we have the obligation to respond to that. And so Universal Design for Learning asks us to rethink about our instruction to make sure that we're removing any barriers that could cause a student to not be successful in the classroom. And sometimes these are really minor, like I forgot my glasses today and now I can't read the text that's in front of me. Thankfully, my teacher has a video that I can watch instead. Or they can be more major things, like I'm going to be learning a standard that's three grade levels below where I'm at, meaning grade-wise, so that I can get that unfinished learning and keep going. So that's what we're talking about with Universal Design for Learning. And then we also have our elementaries kind of moving on to social, emotional, and behavioral supports. And so those meetings happen one time a month, and it's a 10-minute micro-PD and then time for teachers to collaborate on whatever skill or strategy we just taught. And that's headed up with our MTSS coaches, but a lot of other people are involved in that work. Our department facilitators at the secondary level have done an amazing job getting started with that. We also have, it's the next bullet point, MLT, which stands for MTSS Leadership Teams, because we need another acronym in education. But we have teams of teachers and administrators and counselors, social workers that come together and they look at data on a regular basis because we're really trying to prevent students from having to struggle. If we can catch it early and we can intervene, we hope that we'll see that progress in next year's achievement record. Not achievement record, that's the elementary grade card. It came out today, in case anybody wants to get online and see it. But the state's report card. All of our buildings have an MTSS coach that's supporting teachers in implementing those Tier Two and Tier Three practices because teachers have a lot on their plate, right? And they're trying to design instruction for all of the students they serve. So having a coach be able to help with that and to problem-solve and have a thought partner to say, this is the skill that's not mastered, how can we work together to support? We also have curriculum specialists at both elementary and secondary that are working on Tier One strategies and support, including in our preschool. So preschool was part of the, I said, the K-2 ELA adoption, but remember, that started in preschool, too. So this fall, preschool had to start a brand-new curriculum, just like K-2 had to start a brand-new curriculum for ELA. And so our curriculum specialists help support that work as well. And then probably one of my favorite parts is bringing district teams together. And so this past week, we had the opportunity to have our MTSS district teams. We have a secondary team with some rotating members and then some members that come to every meeting. And then we have an elementary team. But right in the middle of the meeting, we come together for an hour, and I feel like that's where the magic happens because you get all these brilliant people in this room and we talk about what does a student's experience look like from preschool to 12th grade and how are we supporting them? Things like fifth to sixth grade transition, eighth to ninth transition, common language across the district, talking about what worked in one area and how could it work in another. Those are the rich conversations that in only two meetings, like give me the chills to even think about. And if you ever want to come visit, like that meeting is pretty incredible to see just the ideas bouncing and just the focused work happening around that. I mentioned this earlier, but MTSS doesn't just happen, it'd be cool if it did, but it's a very long process where you kind of work on it in little pieces. So we start with academic frameworks because honestly, we're teachers and so what do we know best? We know academics, right? So that's an entry point for us to say, we know how to read data and we know what to do when a student may be needing more or we need to go back and reteach. Then we shift into building social, emotional, and behavioral supports, and that is a much harder ballgame. I work with Tammy and her team on this side of the house, talking about what are preventative measures that we can put in place to hopefully ward off behavior or discipline pieces that might pop up. And so it's still using data to make decisions about how we support kids, but we're also talking about those proactive relationship-building strategies that help students know that they do belong here and we're here to support them. And then finally, that third year of implementation focuses on enhancing supports for our special populations. So another amazing meeting that I get to be a part of is our subcommittee where we break into a team that's focused on English-language learners, one team that's focused on special education students, and one team that is focused on gifted students. And so we're talking right now, in preparation, how do we do a good job meeting those students' needs regardless of which setting they're in? And so that work is on the backend and the planning parts right now. Most importantly, how do we measure if this is working, right? So we constantly review data and I kind of break it into two categories, small data and big data. So small data is progress monitoring of specific interventions. I put a couple examples that we have currently happening in our classrooms. And then big data is kind of what Mr. Cooper's presentation was on. The Ohio State tests, the OWLPAs, the AP exams, all those pieces and parts. What we try to do is look at that in conjunction with our teachers and their qualitative data and/or their grades, their attendance, all the different pieces and parts that go into a student's experience. And we create these feedback loops where we're constantly talking about, is it working? Are students benefiting from it? And if they're not, what are we going to do to make it better? We also are working hard to plan visits with students and collecting anecdotal information regarding what the experience of getting these supports is like. I've got a couple examples to share. Charlie Boss also does a great job capturing those real moments where a student just has that like ha-ha just burst, and she's lucky enough to be there to capture it in pictures. But we couldn't do this work if it wasn't all of us working together to review data and make changes. So let me end with just a couple great moments. So how's it going so far? We are definitely focused on unfinished learning. Specifically, a seventh-grade student at Genoa Middle School said, "I finally get to vision from getting some extra supports and learning math in a different way." Our students are focused on growth mindset and goal-setting. And if you've not met Shelley Seaberry and you want to talk about MTSS or Multi-Tierred System of Support, I don't know if she's here, but you should talk to her. What she had the opportunity to do was talk to an eighth grader who was a little bit frustrated that they were going to need some additional support. And here's how she said it, and I think it really sums it up. "This district believes in you so much that we put these supports in place so that you can do anything that you want to do." And that student has come back multiple times to thank them for giving her the extra support. Also, these really beautiful moments are happening that we don't even think about. So I had the opportunity to be here at Central, and a 10th-grade student, when we walked in, was working in Read 180, which is a program we're using for reading intervention. And she went, "Ah, now I know what that word means, and it totally changes the meaning of this song that I was listening to." This whole time, she thought the song was about X, and then she learned the actual meaning of the word and was like, whoa, that song's way different than what I thought it was. And so we get those cool moments of like, that was not what we were out to fix or solve or work on, right? But it's making those connections that that student was so excited that they learned the meaning of that word, and that's what we're here for. So I'll close with, I had, I was preparing for this and I asked the MTSS coaches and some teachers, like, what do you want me to say? What should I tell them about MTSS? And Ashley Glover, who's an MTSS coach at Robert Frost Elementary, last year she was a first-grade teacher at Minerva France, and she wrote it so beautifully. I know it's a lot of words, but I'm going to try to sum it up. They didn't just learn, meaning her students, that they belong here. They learned that they're capable of thriving here. The real triumph wasn't just my students' academic growth, it was watching them claim their own success story. MTSS was a promise of potential for every single student. They actively bought into their own path moving forward. They were the ones plotting their skill growth, celebrating every point of improvement. The data wasn't a burden, it was undeniable proof of their effort. I get a little teary-eyed talking about it, sorry. It's just a really cool moment to see kids finally realize like, yeah, I can do this, I can do anything. So that's what I think MTSS is. What questions can I answer?
Thank you. Are there any questions?
I just have one brief one. When you talk about qualitative data and gathering the qualitative data, what does qualitative data look like when it comes to our students' social and emotional learning? Like what exactly, like not to get too in the weeds, but what specifically are we trying to pick up on so that we can ensure? Because we're going to meet them. I mean, it sounds to me, and I don't want to summarize too much here, but it sounds to me like MTSS is about, a lot about meeting students where they are and then seeking to advance them through. So how can we figure out where students are, they are using qualitative data?
Yeah, it's a little tricky on the social, emotional, behavioral side, for sure. We're just getting started in that work. We obviously have the data from Panorama, which is more quantitative. But for qualitative, it's the stories that the kids are telling counselors, it's the stories teachers are telling us about the experience students are having. We recently were looking at data from behavior observation forums and trying to like, ooh, I think it's really hard at 1:00 on the last Friday of the month. I mean, we know that already, but we are tying things to it that make actionable next steps. And we're also creating resources. This year, we launched the K-2 and 3.5 SEB, or Social, Emotional, Behavioral Hubs for Teachers, and listed on there a wealth of interventions you could do, morning meeting, class community-building pieces. So it'll be hard to measure, to your point, like how do you, how do you measure that? But I guarantee if you talk to our students and our teachers, you'll know. And I'd be happy to come back to and tell you more about it.
Kate, could you hit quickly? You mentioned morning meeting, and I'm not sure the board knows what that is. Could you just share a little bit about how teachers are able to use that as a tool to front-load some of those skills?
Sure. So at the K-5 level, our classrooms start with morning meeting. It's 20 minutes or less usually, and it starts with a greeting. So students learn how to greet each other, how to look at each other, sometimes shake hands, and really, truly connect with each other to get ready for their day. It moves into an activity and a share, so students get the opportunity to share something that's meaningful to them, which can be really exciting in a kindergarten or first-grade class. It's exciting in every room, but it's really exciting in kindergarten and first grade when they share their thoughts. The activity is usually a fun engagement, like game to get us warmed up, but it doesn't always have to tie to something direct like math. It's just a time for us to come together as a classroom community. And then it ends with a message, and the message lays out the structure for here's what's going to happen today because we know that students do well with expectations and routine and structure. And so that morning meeting structure really helps pull the day together and start students' days on the right foot. I mean, imagine if you've had a rough morning at home, you come in and you have your whole class there to support you. And our teachers have done a phenomenal job with that.
Thank you so much. It's really exciting work, it's a lot of acronyms, I know. And maybe that's part of my first question is, you know, for anybody who might be watching or those out here, MTSS, if you could re-explain something, if you could say, this is the biggest misconception, and I think you probably hit it at the beginning of your presentation, but what do you want people to know if they take just one thing away? Like what is MTSS?
I want them to know that we're supporting students in lots of different ways, probably more than they realize.
Yep. And that it's every student, right?
Every student, every day in every one of our classrooms.
Yeah, and it's very different, maybe from the way some of us went to school. So, you know, I invite people's curiosity about it, and thank you for the presentation. And there's just one specific thing I wanted to ask, which is, actually goes back to Mr. Cooper's presentation. So we know that, as the state labels them, students with disabilities, we have some room to, you know, to make improvement and some work to do on reading and math. And I see in the multi-year implementation that the focus in Year Three is on enhancing supports for special populations. And I know that doesn't mean we're waiting until Year Threes.
Yes, yep.
So can you just talk a little bit about how we might start to address some of those issues through MTSS?
Yeah, we already have, so you're right, we aren't waiting until Year Three. It's just, that's the focused learning. So that year, all of our micro-PDs, for example, will all be on how we can support students within those special populations, but that does not mean it's not happening now. So a shift, an example would be students who perhaps were getting reading intervention outside of the classroom previously, now might get time with their teacher plus time with a reading intervention teacher. So you're getting that double dip, which research says will help you close learning gaps quicker. So it shifts like that. It's thinking differently about our schedules and prioritizing time every day for us to be able to support students in whatever way they need, whether it is a student with a disability or not. The goal, again, is that every student is getting what they need. And that's, that's difficult, but we're here for it and we're going to dig in and keep working on it.
Thank you for sharing that example.
Yeah.
Thank you. I think, so I'm sitting here digesting everything we heard from Mr. Cooper and from you, and it dawns on me that the report card really is a snapshot of the district as a whole, right? Just a snapshot in time. But MTSS is really a snapshot of how we're doing with each individual student. And collectively, this could really make sure that we are meeting, as you said, students exactly where they're at and being able to push in interventions as they need them and be creative. I imagine there are times that a teacher might come and say, "I have this really interesting situation, I don't know what to do." And it sounds like, and correct me if I'm wrong, you're able to take it back, the group is able to take it back and say, "Hey, I'm experiencing this, what can we do to meet this student?"
Yes, that's our goal, is that when teachers have concerns about a student, even if they aren't maybe a student we identified from some of those big data points, we still want teachers to be able to say, you know, I feel like we need to dig in and support this student. And so we're building structures that support that, too. Another unique thing we've done this year is with MTSS moving into secondary as well, we are taking like full-support teams to building staff meetings. So for example, when Central had, I'm just saying because I'm here today, but when Central had their MTSS staff meeting, they had the support not only of their MTSS coach, but some members of the curriculum and instruction team were there. There were other MTSS coaches from around the district, plus they had their department facilitators who had already done some pre-work to be ready to engage teachers in that. Now, that was specific to Universal Design for Learning, a strategy we were talking, but the hope is that we grow and what we- But the hope is that we grow in what we're doing so that you can have more people to talk, hey, let's talk about this student, because the data doesn't look like what I thought it would, or I tried this and it didn't work.
Thank you. I love the collaboration. Thank you.
I just have a question in regards to application or rollout. I know this is very, very new for this district in the grand scheme of things, but our teachers are already doing like a lot, right, in the classroom? So can you walk us through the process between when educators across the district give you feedback, whether this is what's working and this is not what's working? How you capture that feedback and then work towards making sure that they're also getting the support that they need?
Sure. I do it in a couple of different ways. I do think teachers are really busy, so I try not to do a lot of surveys, because it's difficult, like, we get, we give a lot of surveys. So a lot of times, they'll give direct feedback to their MTSS coach, and their coach will share that with me. A lot of feedback comes out of the district MTSS meetings. But I would also say that, like, when I go out and visit a building, they'll, they'll stop and tell me how things are going or what we might want to adjust or tweak or change. But what I try to hold myself accountable to is, once I take that feedback, I constantly come back in my meetings and say, this is the feedback I got last time, and here's the adjustment that we've made because of it. So an example in secondary would be our Success Center period, where we're supporting, we had students that needed intervention in both reading and math. And so at first, we were trying to do it all, and we weren't seeing the gains we wanted. And so we shifted to the area that was most at risk or needed the most intervention. That was based on teachers' feedback and student data. And we didn't wait a whole year to do that. We made the adjustment for quarter two. So that's what my goal is when I take feedback. It's that I actually can apply pieces and parts of it. Now, can I apply everything all the time? No, but that doesn't mean I forgot about it. So I try to make sure that when I'm out presenting, that I make sure to put up, this is the feedback I heard, and this is what I did with it.
Kate does a really good job of always talking about, like, we just need to start somewhere. So this is very difficult, and it's easy to put things off because they're hard.
Yeah.
And I think she does a really good job with her team of, we're going to start it, and we're going to make those adjustments as we go, but we're not going to just avoid doing it because it's confusing and hard. And I hear her say that a lot at the district level meetings, and the people that are doing the work are giving that feedback. And it's awesome to see. I love popping in those meetings and seeing the work.
Thank you so much.
Well, I don't think there's any other questions. Just really appreciate all the work that goes into this. I do echo my colleague's comments. I understand that this is a lot of work to roll out and put in place, and just really grateful that we're doing this work. Thank you.
Thanks.
Next up, we have superintendent's comments, Ms. Hamburg.
Thank you. I shared a slide with the board members, because I know you can't see the screen. And I can't see the screen. Let's see if it's up there yet. Jennifer's getting it. There we go. So for the sake of time, because we had two awesome presentations tonight, and I do want to take just a moment to thank Mark Cooper, Matt Meisner, Kate Toma, for all of the information they shared. You know, we've had a lot going on, obviously, this fall, and sometimes we take for granted that we know all this work is happening, but I think it's really important that we take time to share it with the board, because really, the stuff that we talked about tonight is a huge volume of what we do on a daily basis. This is our core work. So there's a lot, you know, we have our ballot issue going on. There's a lot of noise around that. And so sometimes it's easy to get distracted and forget that all this great work is happening every single day. And so I want to thank them for sharing it. But more importantly, I know we have a lot of folks here. I see some of our curriculum specialists and coaches and teachers. And so I just really appreciate all the work that, what they just summarized in that amount of time, doesn't begin to scratch the surface of all the work that's going on to make that happen. So thank you to all of you who are here tonight that are really doing the true work with the kids to make that happen. So for the sake of time, I'm just going to share at the last meeting, Mrs. Meyer, you had requested that we kind of review again those reductions that we had talked about. And so just wanted to pull that slide back up. And we're talking about the $20 million that we will need to reduce if we're not successful on the ballot issue. And I'll just kind of run through this list and remind you of kind of what is in each of these areas. So the first area is the co and extracurriculars. This one is a little unique from the other items, because it would be about adding revenue in versus reducing costs. And so we would be looking at, again, increasing our pay to participate fees for our middle schoolers to 350, our high schoolers to $500 per sport. Our activity fee would go to $50 for high school, $25 for middle school. And again, we currently have a cap on our sports. We would eliminate that family cap. And we would anticipate that we would have about a $1.3 million swing in the deficit through the revenues that we would, we would be able to raise there. We have looked at, we would sadly anticipate there would be a drop off in participation. We know that those increased fees would create barriers for kids and families. And so we would anticipate, based on what we saw the last time we had to raise fees up, we would anticipate about a 25% drop off in the participation levels for those sports. Next, we have transportation. And with the transportation, and Mrs. Dennis and her team have looked at what that would look like with reducing some routes. We know we're already running at a shortage. We're already struggling to staff those, but we think we would be able to reduce at least 14 routes through some changes in transportation zones and eligibility. And that would save us about $1 million. The bulk of our, our savings would be in staffing. We are a service industry, and the majority of our expenses go to all the people that work with our kids. And so obviously, that do all the work that we were just talking about. So to kind of go through that 12.3 million, we would be looking at, and these are estimates of positions, we would try to do as few as possible, depending on the actual numbers. One of the things we talked about last time, we've seen a lot of changes in the state teacher's retirement system requirements. So they dropped last spring from 33 years down to 32. If we see an additional decrease there, that could impact the number of people who choose to retire, because they're suddenly eligible. We know people at the higher end of the pay scale, it's usually about two brand-new teachers would equal one person at the end of their career. Obviously, if somebody works throughout their entire career, they make more. So with that, we're looking at around 10 positions administratively, and this is in addition to the 33 total positions we've already eliminated at a district level after the last levy failure. Seven of those were administrative, so 10 additional ones. 64 at the elementary level. That would be looking, again, at our art, music, physical education, and library, because those are not required to be offered at that level. We would also recommend looking at our magnet programs and reducing the overall length of the student day so that we could give our core classroom teachers their planned time outside of the student day, because they wouldn't be able to have their planned time during the specials period. At the middle school, we would be looking at around 31 positions. We would look at eliminating teaming at the sixth grade level, which would pick up some of our core classes. And then also looking at those elective classes. I would just note at the middle school with last year's budget bill that passed, that we are no longer able to have a waiver for career courses that we offer at the middle school. So in the past, we didn't need to worry about the waiver, because we were offering those exploration classes for our pathways. But now we would be required to offer at least one of those at the seventh grade level and one at the eighth grade level. So what we're talking about there would be like our engineering and our health pathways, medical detectives course. We would probably still offer those, but we wouldn't have to offer all of our other elective courses at the middle school. And again, we would look at a reduced student day. So previously, when we had levy failures back in 11, 2011, 2012 timeframe, my understanding is we had middle schoolers sitting in study halls for multiple periods. That becomes a discipline nightmare, and I would not recommend that. I would recommend shortening the day and, again, giving the staff members their planned time outside of the student day. At the high school, we're not able to reduce as many at that level as the other two levels due to graduation requirements and college requirements. But we would be looking at around 19 positions. Again, by making bigger class sizes, we would do that through having less offerings. Right now, we have very robust course offerings, which we're very proud of. We talked a lot about that tonight with our AP, our IB, our College Credit Plus offerings on campus. We would look at reducing those offerings so that we could maximize class sizes across our three high schools. And again, we would not need to offer the CCP on campus, which would be a savings of the money that we're paying to Columbus State to do that. And it would also, we would look at library, which is not required at that level either. Throughout the district, other positions that we would look at, more at a district level, are people that are serving multiple buildings. We would look at gifted, specialized learning services, curriculum and instruction, student services, technology, human resources, our fiscal office, custodial, and maintenance staff. And so across all of those areas, we're looking at about 124 positions, and that would be 12.3 million is what we're estimating. Again, that would vary depending on the actual positions. And then we look at other items to get to our 20 million. We would be looking at the complete elimination of summer school. We've already reduced that after the ESR funds expired. The ESR funds, as a reminder, were the COVID dollars that we received that helped us to expand that to help with learning loss. We would look at reducing some contracted services across the district, eliminating field trips, eliminating all-day kindergarten. As a reminder, half-day kindergarten is the required model. We currently offer a tuition-based all-day kindergarten, but the tuition does not cover the whole cost of all-day kindergarten. So as Nicole ran those numbers and we looked at it, that would be an area that we would recommend eliminating. We would eliminate or greatly reduce overtime. Right now, where we have staffing shortages, we're able to utilize overtime, for example, with the custodial services. If we don't have enough custodians, we're able to pay employees overtime, which obviously costs more, to get that cleaning done. So we would look at reducing cleaning schedules to minimums. We would look at increasing student fees, increasing facility rental fees. We've tried to keep those fees really low, especially for community groups that are based in our school district. We would look at increasing those. And then finally, we would look at supplemental contracts. So when we talked about the first item with pay to participate, we were talking about increasing revenue, but we would also look at areas where we have low participation or lower participation, eliminating some of those supplemental contracts. We also have additional supplemental contracts that are not necessarily for clubs and activities or sports, but are to accomplish different types of work throughout the school day that we would look at eliminating. So that would be additional 5.4 million, and that would put us at the 20 million that we would be recommending to the board if we're not successful next week. I'm happy to, Nicole, did I miss anything that you want to add?
No, I think so. Just a reminder that some of those positions that Angie talked about, sorry, Mrs. Hamburg talked about eliminating would result in larger class sizes overall because of the fewer offerings and what's available. Yeah.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah. Have we thought about, when we say shorten the school day, about how much shorter would it get?
I would guess probably about an hour, but we haven't drilled completely down into that.
I was just thinking, as a mom, if I was a elementary mom, a working mom and working parents, I'd have to get additional daycare. And so would the, I'm assuming the YCA would then also shift to?
So I've had some initial conversations with them. You know, I would assume if they're picking up additional time, there would probably be a cost. But, you know, we're waiting to see if that's something that we, and again, all this would go into effect for next school year. So if we're not successful next week, those would be the types of conversations that we would kind of flesh out the details as we move through the next few months. I think they would be able to do that. It's just a matter of what the additional cost would be for families. But if we eliminate teachers and still keep the kids for the same amount of time without having a place, so what was done previously was there were study hall monitors added to watch them. And again, when kids don't even have that much homework to do for three hours worth of study hall, like, I just don't educationally recommend that.
Just as a reminder, you know, something I've been hearing a lot about out in the community as I'm talking to people is, could you just remind us how long it took to bring back some of that middle school programming? And, you know, I even heard this week that by a parent of a student who was in music, how they felt that it wasn't even fully back to normal from the past failures.
Yeah, that the high school levels are even obviously impacted when we don't have those opportunities at the younger levels. You know, obviously, I wasn't here, but Scott Reeves and Anne Baldwin and some of the other folks have given me a lot of that history, Matt Meisner. So when we eliminated all of those opportunities, middle school was hit particularly hard the last time, back in the 2011, 2012. And really, it's only been within the last few years that they've really gotten those programs back to where we wanted them to be. And it was done very strategically. So one of the criticisms that I've heard a lot is, you know, why have we added staff when our enrollment has decreased? And one of the, one of the assumptions there is that you had the right staff to begin with. And so our staffing was low after all those reductions were made. And when Minerva Park was open, that is when we finally were able to add back and actually have the elective courses to give our kids that experience and that well-rounded education that we're trying to give them. So, you know, we know that our, as a former middle school principal, I can tell you, and I taught ninth grade English primarily, and I, I got excited to get up in the morning and go to English class. But, you know, a lot of kids, that's not what they get excited about in middle school. So we know that just having language arts, math, science, and social studies for our kids is not really giving them that full experience and that full exposure. And so as we added back in the music, the art, the PE, we also were able to add in those career exploration pathway courses with medical detectives and the engineering, and then add another year of engineering. So I think the program that we have right now is very exciting for our middle schoolers. It was done strategically, and it really just got fully developed out over the last few years from the last time we had to make cuts. And again, as we talk about the staffing adds that were made over the last few years, there are a few main areas. Mark talked about the, the special education ads that we've made because of that growing population. But from a general education standpoint, one of the main areas we've added is middle school. And that wasn't an ad, because we were like just trying to layer on programs. That was trying to build back what we had lost previously.
Yeah, and related to middle school, so I unfortunately remember all of that and going through that. One of the things that was really fought for by teachers and others in the district was the teaming, which you kind of mentioned, but I'm not sure everybody knows what that is. If you haven't had a sixth grader, you know, who's in teaming, so can you just give the brief primer on teaming?
Yes. So teaming is when, and it's usually at the middle school level, but it can be at other levels. Kids are put onto a team, so a group of teachers, typically one from each of the content areas. They all have the same kids. So instead of kids being scheduled more in like a junior high or high school model where they're just all across and different teachers have different kids, get put almost like in a pod where this hundred kids is with the same teachers, and then they can meet and look at the kids and really drill down and be more strategic about what their day looks like, where they need assistance. It feeds into this MTSS model really well. And then they have a flex period. So during that flex time, instead of having like a study hall, it's a more targeted period where they can get assistance, they can drill into what each kid really needs, and they're able to do that when they just share a smaller group of kids instead of just having kids spread across the building.
Yeah, thank you for talking that through. It does really dovetail well with MTSS. I think, you know, what historically in this district we saw was it was a real need for better transition from fifth to sixth grade.
Yes.
Right? Sixth graders are pretty young academically. You know, their curriculum is a little more like fifth grade than maybe like seventh or eighth grade.
And that's a huge transition for them to go from an elementary model to feeling what was more like a junior high. Without the, without the teaming, it's really a junior high. The teaming is what makes it middle school, makes it where we're really keeping them in smaller areas and really looking at their individual needs and having those conversations. And I know our middle schools have wanted to add teaming at seventh and eighth grade, and we've just been trying with our staffing levels to maintain what we have at sixth grade for now. I mean, our ultimate goal, and I mentioned, I was a middle school principal, I'm a huge proponent of teaming when it's done right. I would love to see us have teaming across the entire middle school. I think it can really make a very robust experience, and it fits into everything that Ms. Toma was talking about with how we get in and really try to dig in and look at where the kids are and get them the interventions they need. It builds that time into the day so that that, one of the challenges with MTSS at middle and high school is the structure of the day. And so when we have teaming already in place, it kind of puts those structures where we're really ready to jump right into MTSS.
Thanks for digging into that. Just wanted everyone to understand, when you said that, what that really meant.
Just real briefly, if, if we were to have to undergo these deficit reductions... Just real briefly, if we were to have to undergo these deficit reductions, what would that mean at a macro level for what we just heard about MTSS? We're talking about losing some teacher time. We're talking, can you sort of just, with that, would we visualize, well, we wouldn't be able to do much for two or three years? Would it be like back to year zero? Like, what would that really look like if we couldn't advance MTSS because of the staffing reductions and things that would have to be undertaken?
Great question. I think we'd approach it from a triage level. We've talked about there would be some reductions in the number of coaches that we have. I would really encourage you, I know Kate invited you to come into a district MTSS meeting. I would, if you're able to do that, I think it would be a great experience. It always fills my bucket just to see the work that they're doing. The coaches that they've hired are just really bought into the work and so positive, and it's just super exciting to see. So I would hate to see those, you know, and part of what makes it work, and I'm a huge proponent of coaching as well, again, when it's done right, is when you have a coach that's in a building and they know that staff and they are able to get in and build relationships and then help teachers. I think everybody can benefit from coaching, whether you're a brand-new first-year teacher or a highly successful veteran teacher. It's just having that thought partner to come in and help you in your classroom, to help you when you're struggling with kids. And so trying to share those positions, and I've been in situations previously in my career where those are shared across multiple buildings, it's very hard because they just don't have the relationships. So they're basically just coming in and trying to run those meetings where they're looking at data, but they don't know the kids, they don't know the teachers. And so I think it would be a huge setback in the work that we're trying to do. And it would, we would struggle with having the staff available to provide interventions because right now, we've worked really hard to try to free up periods, especially at the secondary level, for people to be able to do that. And without those supports in place, it would be really hard to move that work forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have public comments. And so just want to remind everyone, the Board of Education welcomes public comment on educational issues of interest to our school community. The Board does not discriminate based on the identity or viewpoint of the speaker during our public participation. However, the Board President may limit comments that are obscene, abusive or harassing. In an attempt to protect the privacy interests of our students, the Board asks that speakers not identify students by name during their comments. Persons having complaints about district personnel, programming or operations will be referred to the process set forth in Board Policy 9130. And finally, the Board reminds speakers that their statements should be directed to the Board as a whole and not to individual members. Each speaker will have three minutes to address the Board. A timer will be shown on this screen above us, and this dentist will call time when three minutes has elapsed. Our first speaker this evening, and I want to thank everyone for writing very clearly tonight, is Ms. Yana Doughty. Sorry, Doty. My apologies.
All right. Good evening. My name is Yana Doughty, and I'm here tonight as a parent and a community member. Our schools are the heart of this community. They're where our children learn, question, create and lead. They're where teachers give everything they have, often spending their own money and their own nights and weekends to make sure every child is seen and supported. There were bus drivers, custodians, cafeteria workers, secretaries, aides and coaches show up every single day because they care about these kids in this city. So before I go any further, I want to take a moment to say thank you to every teacher, staff member, administrator and board member in this district. The work you do inside the classroom is extraordinary, but what you've done outside of your regular hours over these last few months has been nothing short of heroic. But lately, it feels like the heart of this city is under attack. What we've seen from the anti-levy campaign is not just disagreement, it's disinformation. It's the deliberate twisting of facts meant to sow doubt and division. People are being told lies about where the money goes, about what this levy means and about the integrity of the people who serve this district. And that's not civic engagement, that's sabotage of the truth. Some of the loudest critics don't even live here. Some of them send their children to private schools, or they might homeschool, which is their right, but they have no stake in the outcome of this levy while trying to tear down a system they no longer rely on or have already benefited from. And that's not fairness, that's hypocrisy. They keep saying we're fear mongering, that these cuts won't really happen. Let's be very clear, the cuts are very real, and they will absolutely happen if this levy fails. And the truth is, administration has even offered to meet with members of the opposition to go line by line through the numbers to answer their questions, to help them understand what this district is facing, but those offers have gone unanswered. When you underfund public schools, everyone pays the price. Even private and parochial schools feel the ripple effect because they rely on our district for things like transportation, special education support and other resources. This levy is about kids who deserve music, art, counselors, sports, small class sizes. It's about making sure that Westerville stays a place people want to move to, not one where they drive past the for sale signs because the schools have been gutted by cynicism and lies. We are stronger than this moment, and in the final days before the election, I hope every person who loves this city remembers one simple truth: Strong schools build strong communities; weakening them weakens us all. Thank you.
Next up, we have Mr. Doug Krensky.
I just want to address a couple of things from the last meeting, some misleading information that supposedly has been out there to the community, that we are putting out there as the Vote No Group. In fact, the information I believe that was referred to from someone on the stage last time was about state funding. It's absolutely incorrect to say the district is getting less money over the last six years. The district, if you go and look at the line items on their own numbers, shows particularly over the last four years, the district has gained more money from the state. That's a fact. You can debate it any way you want, facts are facts. So let's look at it this way. Since 2020, we've invested $1 billion, $176 million into this district through our local, state and federal money. And what's happened? Test scores have continued to drop over the last 10 years. And yes, we can look back and we can use that as a measurement moving forward. They have dropped, and they've not gone back to those levels. Enrollment from the 2019 projections for the property tax levy that was passed, 2,065 kids have never appeared into the district. The state has increased their money by 16.5%. Enrollment has dropped. Last year alone, the expenses went up almost $23 million while enrollment was dropping. This will be a permanent income tax of 0.75%. Renters, homeowners, they need to be aware of this. It's on your earned income. And talking about positions, the district has added 171 positions over the last five years while enrollment has dropped. Interesting. Board has found $9 million in cost savings after the $20,800,000 levy failed. Before that levy was voted on, we asked them to look at cost savings. There were no cost savings to be found, yet after, they found $9 million. This time, they're asking for $24,300,000 after they found $9 million in savings. And now, they only need to cut $20 million, but yet they're asking for $24 million. The numbers just simply don't make sense. This would be an increase of 32% more than the property tax levy that was proposed last fall. The Board is sitting on over $100 million in cash reserves. They could very easily use that money to cover whatever cuts they think they need to make if this levy income tax does go down. We need to keep Westerville affordable, and I hope encourage people to go to our website, ConcernedCitizensOfWesterville.org, and vote no. Thank you.
Next up, we have Heather Fredo. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Heather Fredo, and first and foremost, I'm a proud parent of a Westerville City School second grader. My husband and I also have a five-year-old and a three-year-old who will soon be joining this wonderful district. In addition to being a Westerville parent, I've spent my entire career serving this community that I do deeply believe in. However, in 2011, my position was cut, along with many other art, music and gym teachers. The proposed budget cuts are not just a threat, it will happen. I was eventually brought back, and I am currently in my 15th year as an elementary art teacher. And in that time, I've had the privilege of teaching more than 1,500 students. I would love nothing more than to continue doing just that, not only because I love what I do, but because our students need it and our community benefits from it as well. Art matters. It fosters creativity, critical thinking and emotional growth, all while improving academic performance. It gives students a way to express themselves, build confidence and develop the problem-solving and decision-making skills they'll use for the rest of their lives. In today's world, our students are facing more stress and anxiety than ever before. Art provides a healthy outlet, a space to process emotions, build confidence, experience joy and learning. Study after study shows that students involved in the arts report lower levels of stress, higher school engagement and better attendance. For some children, art class is the one part of the day where they truly feel successful. For many of my students, art is a safe haven, a place where they can truly be themselves, where they feel confident and seen. It also helps them understand the world around them. Through studying different cultures and histories, they gain perspective, empathy and appreciation for others. Art has captured our history for centuries, and it will continue to shape the history we're creating today. Art doesn't compete with academics, it enhances them. The skills students develop in art class, creativity, perseverance, critical thinking and collaboration are the same skills employers look for in every industry. As Ohio's economy grows in technology, design, engineering and healthcare, creativity and innovation are what set our students apart. Cutting art today means limiting the creative capacity our community depends on tomorrow. Art brings people together. School art shows, murals, performances, these are moments where families and neighbors come to celebrate our students. Art gives every child a chance to shine, regardless of test scores or background. For many students who struggle elsewhere, art is where they find their voice. When we remove that opportunity, we risk silencing them. The return on investment in arts education is measurable. I know it's not easy to say yes to one more thing, especially when times are tough and budgets are tight, but education...Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Mary Jean Botler. Welcome.
Thank you, members of the school board and administration. I'm Mary Jean Botler, a Westerville resident. The Senate just passed a bill that if approved by the House, adds a new requirement to the curriculum of Ohio schools. It is legislation that is being pushed by the Heritage Foundation that brought us Project 2025. It is their answer to poverty in America, even as we stand on the precipice of one of the largest cuts in food security in our nation. Ohio schools would be required to teach students what is called the success sequence. That is, the proper ordering of life events: graduating high school, get a job, get married and have children. While all of those life events may hold value, when it comes to poverty, studies have shown that the ordering of those life events do not. The bill would require the Ohio Department of Education and workforce to create a model curriculum for succession sequence, for success sequence for grade six through 12 as a requirement for graduation. But the Senate does not speak to the most important issue. Who would teach this new unfunded mandated curriculum? And what will need to be dropped from the curriculum in order to satisfy this unfunded mandate? If the school needs to hire additional staff in each high school and middle school, what will it mean for the budget? Will we have citizens complaining as they are presently about the bloat in staff, as if the school board does not have its hands tied when an unfunded mandate is ordered? In addition, there are only a certain number of hours in the school day. So what does not get taught so we can satisfy the whims of the Heritage Foundation? I don't think the community, or certainly not many of those who are opposing the levy, fully understand the strain these constant unfunded mandates from legislators create for an already stretched budget. I'm not aware of a place that Westerville citizens can go to review these unfunded mandates under which our local schools operate so as to consider what it means for our children's education. I know that the board members and administration, members of the administration have their hands full, but I would encourage you to develop some tool that would educate us all about these unfunded state mandates, what it requires in people and funds to satisfy these mandates, and how they are affecting the overall budget priorities in our schools. We need to say a strong yes to the school levy and a strong no to these legislators who are not working in our schools' best interests. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Rebecca Gaffney. Welcome.
Good evening. I'd start, I'd like to start by addressing the audience first. If you are a current student, former student, parent, teacher, or of any of the music, arts, language, advanced courses, or athletic programs, or library sciences, please stand. Thank you for being here. My name is Rebecca Gaffney. I'm an English teacher at Westerville North High School, and I serve as the Communications Co-Chair for the Westerville Education Association, supporting the teachers and staff who dedicate their lives to this district every day. I stand before you tonight not just as an advocate for my colleagues, but as an advocate for every single student who walks through our doors. The WEA is supporting the 0.75% income tax on the ballot next week. The foundation of Westerville schools is resting on unstable ground because of those who seek to attack, misrepresent and dismantle public education. Without immediate action, we face the heartbreaking additional reduction of 114 teachers and 10 administrators. This isn't about closing budget gaps, it's about dissolving classrooms, increasing class sizes and overwhelming staff who remain, staff our children rely on. We are here because of the lack of adequate state funding models have forced the district to diversify investments and move away from property tax revenues. We have reached the limit of what we can cut without fundamentally damaging the quality of education we provide. A yes vote is a critical step needed to stabilize Westerville schools. It provides a reliable, ongoing revenue stream that allows us to budget for the future, not just brace for the next financial crisis. It will not affect retirees or price them out of their homes as the opposition suggests. Crucially, the stability allows us to retain highly qualified teachers and staff. We are competing with surrounding districts for top talent. When we cannot offer competitive salaries, resources, or even job security, we risk losing the experienced educators, the ones who initiate the lifelong musical, athletic, advanced academic and artistic passions, who make profound differences in our children's lives. Passing this income tax ensures that when a teacher is considering where to build their career, they see our district as a secure and rewarding option. This community has always been defined by its commitment to its young people and its simple, powerful motto: Where you belong. We cannot claim to be where you belong if we cannot afford the teachers who create that sense of belonging. We cannot be where you belong if we are forced to eliminate programs that serve our most vulnerable students, students with innate talents who need nurturing to succeed, or uncapping the fees to participate in the engaging student activities. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Kristi Groger. Welcome.
My name is Kristi Groger. I'm a parent to two Westerville City Schools
I'm a parent to two Westerville City Schools students, and I'm also a substitute teacher in the district. I've spoken at the two previous meetings, once to support students in our life skills classrooms, and then I've spoke to urge the community to come together to support all of our students and to build a stronger community. Tonight, I wanted to take a moment to highlight an endorsement for the tax increase from our Westerville Parent Council. The Westerville Parent Council is the umbrella organization for 35 PTAs, PTOs, PTSAs, and booster groups that support the students and staff in our 24 preschool-through-high-school buildings. Collectively, our member groups and their individual volunteers annually contribute more than 125,000 hours of volunteer work, more than $40,000 in graduating senior scholarships, and general monetary support for initiatives that enhance the student experience in the high-six figures. As you just heard, to say that the Westerville Parent Council has a pulse on the needs of our students, buildings, and staff is a true understatement. Earlier this fall, the voting delegates of the Westerville Parent Council elected to fully endorse the November 2025 ballot issue proposing the earned income tax to support our schools. I'd like to share that endorsement with the board now. The voting body of the Westerville Parent Council endorses the earned income tax initiative that has been placed on the November ballot. Securing these funds will positively impact students, families, and WPC member groups by sustaining programming, staffing, and operations at a level to which our students and families have become accustomed. Maintaining excellent holistic learning experiences provides for an educational environment that empowered the potential in students, an ideal and direct congruence with the mission of Westerville Parent Council. I stand with Westerville Parent Council in supporting this tax levy. I urge all of you also to get out there, to talk to your friends. If anyone who is against the levy wants to have a conversation with so many of us that are here to support it, I think we would welcome that. I think it speaks volumes that the number of people still sitting in these seats tonight, I believe—I don't mean to misrepresent—I believe we all are here to support. And anyone who has voted no has already left and does not want to hear our side. So if that doesn't speak volumes to who's willing to come here to sit and to talk to the board, last meeting, I told you I will hold you accountable with how you spend this money when it's given to you, and I mean that. I don't know what else the other group has to say, because they're not here. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Adam Price. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. So, my name's Adam Price. I speak to you first as a—hold on. First, personally, I'm excited to be a Westerville resident now, as of two months ago. Very excited, yeah, thank you. And then also, now a father of a student in Westerville Schools, as of today. Yes. My son's three years old, he started at the ELC today. Very excited. By the way, wonderful experience starting at the ELC, and we've loved it. Now as a professional. So, I'm a business owner, I'm the principal broker and owner of Reach Realty, independent real estate brokerage in Westerville. My wife and I chose Westerville as our home. We actually traveled for a few years before we came back when I was working in healthcare. But we chose Westerville because it's a warm, loving, caring community that invests in its future, and a major investment in its future is its public schools. The National Association of Realtors highlights a study done by the Bureau of Economic Research showing that for every dollar a community invests in its school—or its schools, home values may rise $20. It's a 20-to-1 return on a community investment and a data-backed connection between school funding and property values. And it aligns with my experience as a broker. Well-funded schools lead to local, healthy markets that are stable, and they're good for everyone: homeowners, renters, local businesses. And that's why I'm voting yes on the Westerville School Levy.
Thank you. Next up, we have Ann Schreier. Welcome.
That was a little hard to follow, because he had way more energy than myself. And I need my flashlight, because I don't have my readers. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Ann Schreier. I grew up in a rural part of Ohio where the biggest landowners and thus the biggest hit for property tax were farmers. I was in overcrowded schools for most of my time there because we could not pass the levy. I went to eighth and ninth grade in a school that had—in one—that was the building, eighth and ninth grade—that had served my grandmother, and later Neil Armstrong, who had graduated 50 years prior to me. Bloom was an ancient building with poor HVAC, wildly noncompliant with ADA, even for the early '90s, and a myriad of other issues. I saw the fees for extracurriculars increase dramatically in a rural district where folks could not always afford those fees. We saw courses limited and increasing fees for clubs in an area where other non-school options were not readily available. Again, the rural, cows and corn. This was in a district where it was the center of its community, and it suffered without proper funding. We did finally pass a capital funding levy, and we were met with the same misinformation before social media. We were accused of building a bowling alley in our school. We had an academic bowl team? Slight difference. So it's always been a thing. Now, I'm a parent to a heritage middle schooler here in Westerville who also attended the 50-year-old Frost Elementary, younger than me. I had the opportunity to volunteer with the PTA Scholarship Committee for Frost last year and saw the applications of many amazing graduating seniors here. The rubric that was used for assessing the scholarships included points awarded for extracurricular activities and clubs. Most students had an array of school-based activities that they were able to add to their application, such as marching band, orchestra, soccer, swim team, et cetera, as well as many varied clubs that we have in our schools. All of these programs will be hit with those fees that we talked about if this ballot issue does not pass. So the very students applying for scholarships to go to college, to go to certification programs, will be charged more money just to participate in the extracurriculars needed to fill out a strong application. So they're going to get hit double. I have talked to voters in both Franklin and Delaware Counties, and just yesterday met a 30-ish-year-old woman who talked about all the different extracurriculars she participated in and valued, and her diverse opportunities available to her here in the Westerville School District. Our school district is one of the best assets in our great community. I urge my neighbors and community—I'm preaching to the choir, I think—to support the ballot issue and vote yes for Westerville Schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next up, we have Rory Howe. Welcome.
Thank you so much to all of our teachers and to the school board. I just want to confess that I am a victim of misinformation. I moved here in 2016. We chose the school district to—just because we love the community and we were hoping that, you know, our children could attend schools here. And I honestly thought that the schools were terrible, based off of what I was hearing. But as I enrolled my children in the schools here, I learned how passionate the teachers are for the children and how transparent the school district is. Any questions so far that I've had about concerns, I have been able to have that answered. And I have been diligently still trying to research the opposition viewpoints behind that, and I just can't come to any conclusions yet, except for the fact that everything that I am hearing and what the schools are doing is just simply to serve the children and to serve the community. And we have over 2,000 staff members that work in Westerville City Schools, and over 20 different schools is a large district. There are more than 80% of Westerville City School kids that attend this district. Obviously, the others have the choice to do what they want. But overall, you know, these schools are a safe place for these children. I grew up in a family where the public school system was my safe place. And I cannot imagine where I would be without the opportunities that I had in the public school district. And so we're talking about anecdotal information and quantitative information in tonight's meeting, but the qualitative reports that you don't see, that you don't hear about in terms of numbers and facts like that, are the principals giving the children high-fives in the morning, and all the other things that you see the parents putting—and the teachers putting energy into in the school system. My own child thrives through the arts, and I can't imagine the school district not being able to offer that to her. My own brother, through the public school system, was able to go on, and he now markets a major band that many people know of. And really, I honestly cannot—I cannot imagine what our lives would be like if we didn't have the opportunity to attend a public school system. And it breaks—it breaks my heart to hear so much hate being directed towards the schools and towards the administrators and the teachers, simply because they just don't see what's going on behind the—I guess—from the inside, they see it from the outside. And I appreciate everybody's time in hearing my statement. Thank you.
Thank you. And next up, we have Mr. Kevin Hoffman. Welcome back.
Good evening, board members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. My name is Kevin Hoffman, and I am here as the co-chair of Yes for Westerville Schools. I'm here tonight to talk about the levy that's on the ballot November 4th, and to try and clear up some of the misinformation and misdirection that some opponents of the levy are sharing to try and confuse members of our community. I spent some time over the last couple of weeks going through the district website and seeking factual information. I would really like to thank you for the transparency that you provide to our community. On your website, I found the district's financial reports. I found awards from the Auditor of State, and I found board docs with all of the details of all of your board meetings for the last 20 years, including the five-year forecast that you present that show very clearly the financial situation of the district. And when I looked at all of that information, it made the facts really quite clear and simple. This community approved its last operating levy in 2019. That levy was supposed to last until 2023, but thanks to sound fiscal management by the board and the administration, that levy has lasted through today, albeit with some challenges. Since 2019, the cost of living has increased approximately 25%, and as we've heard, state funding to this district has actually gone down. So when you look at those facts, this levy is purely just to offset inflation and enable our school district to continue to provide the services that make our kids and our community successful. It's important that people understand the magnitude of the decision that they're about to make. As you reminded us tonight, if we don't pass the levy, there are $20 million in services to our children that are at risk. That impacts many class offerings at all levels, busing, and significant increases to pay the participant fees, among other things. When we pass this levy, it will cost a person with an earned income of $50,000 a year approximately $15 per biweekly paycheck. And if you don't have any earned income, if you rely on pensions, social security, unemployment, or investments to pay your bills, this levy won't cost you anything. No misdirection, no confusion, just the facts. I encourage every member of our community to vote yes on the Westerville Schools' operating levy November 4th. For our kids, for our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. This concludes the public commenting period, so thank you all for coming out tonight. Next, we're going to move on to board meeting minutes, and may I have a motion to approve the amended minutes of the Regular Board of Education meeting held on Monday, September 22nd, 2025? So moved.
Second.
Any comments?
Yeah, I just want to mention, this was an oversight. I apologize for missing the last meeting, I was out ill, but this was an oversight on my part. We did not add the extension of the public comment period to the previous minutes, so I need the board to update those. I apologize for that.
Thank you. I don't think you have to apologize for being ill, but thank you for making sure we amended it. No other comments? Please go ahead and take the vote.
Mrs. Lieban?
Yes.
Mr. Hackelman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ottman?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes. And may I have a motion to approve the minutes of the Regular Board of Education meeting held on Monday, October 13th, 2025?
So moved.
Second. Any comments or changes needed here? Okay, will you take the vote?
Mr. Hackelman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ottman?
Yes.
Mrs. Lieban?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
And moving along to financials, in 7.01, may I have a motion to approve the financial report and investments for September 2025? So moved.
Second.
Ms. Marshall, will you talk to us about these?
Yes. As you mentioned, this is the month-end for September 30th, 2025. For the general fund year-to-date receipts, we had $90.8 million in year-to-date receipts, and then for year-to-date expenses, we had $54.1 million. Just a reminder, our tax settlements come in August, so we have that revenue front-loaded at the earlier part in the year. And we ended up with an unencumbered general fund balance of $141.6 million for September month-end. And for all funds, we had year-to-date receipts of $112.5 million, year-to-date expenditures of $75.9 million, and we ended with unencumbered fund balance for all funds of $237.8 million. And just a reminder, we're just a few months into the fiscal year so far.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments?
I do. I mean, just a technical question. For those looking at the report right now, what does the abbreviation LFI stand for by some of the schools?
Oh, LFI stands for Locally Funded Initiative. So part of the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission, where we've partnered with them for the Expedited Local Partnership Program. And that's where—from the bond issue that was passed by voters back in 2019, we've conducted a lot of facilities work with that—with the bond issue, including the new elementary, new middle school, all of the secure vestibules that we've added to all of our entryways and things like that throughout our buildings. So part of those projects, we have the facilities master plan, we have a state share and a local share. The state's portion is 35% of that. We're building credits, we haven't seen any funding for that, we're well over $25 million at this point in those credits. But anything that exceeds what's agreed upon between the state share and the local share, there's also the locally funded initiative. So it might look like something—like if our building's not large enough for what their design manual says it should look like for the number of students we have in it, the renovations to that might be a locally funded initiative. So when I think about like some of our—like our magnet schools, for example, like Hamby and Emerson, those—all of the renovations for those were locally funded initiatives because they don't meet that design manual. Yeah. Great question.
Any other? All right, will you take the vote?
Mrs. Ottman?
Yes.
Mrs. Lieban?
Yes.
Mr. Hackelman?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
And may I have a motion to approve the purchases in accordance with Ohio Revised Code 5705.419D1 and Board Policy 6320?
So moved.
Second. Will you talk to us about this too, please, Ms. Marshall?
Yes, thank you. So we have one—we like to call these then-and-now purchase orders. This is for the Renaissance Columbus Hotel here in Westerville with Westerville Central High School. So this was actually a deposit for their prom, which was made at the end of last year, the last school year. And so they did not yet have access to their current year budgets in order to pay that and to get that purchase order open. So they're paying for it out of this year budget, and the purchase order was opened at the beginning of the year. So I would recommend the board's approval, as that was planned for just—it's just a different year, off-cycle, that's all.
Thank you for that explanation. Any questions or comments? All right, will you take the vote?
Mr. Hackelman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ottman?
Yes.
Mrs. Lieban?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Yes. And I'm going to take personal consent agenda, 8.01 through 8.08.
So moved.
Second. And welcome, Mr. Reeves. It's hard to see, I'm sorry.
I know, I know. But thank you and good evening. And I would like to present to you for your consideration, tonight's personal consent agenda. Along with the regular action items in tonight's agenda, there are a number of items to be noted and you'll also note that tonight's consent agenda is actually fairly light. Resignations, we only have two classified and zero licensed resignations for the board to consider this evening, as well as three employees resigning early from their supplemental contracts. Leave of absences and contract status changes, we have no new leave of absences this evening, only an extension to the possible end date of a current leave. We also have our typical classified contract status changes to accompany work schedule adjustments. Employment, we are eager to recommend the hire of four new classified employees and a retired former teacher as a home instruction tutor. The board will also see the bulk of our winter supplementals to approve, and it's hard to believe, but the winter sports will begin by the end of the coming month. Retirements, the board has two classified retirements to approve this evening. Gabrielle Harville will be retiring at the end of February as a secretary from Whittier Elementary School after 36 years of service to the district. What makes Gabby's service so special is she served her entire 36 years at Whittier and will be incredibly missed there. Amy Ford has retired after 10 years of service in the food service employment. Amy finished her career as the supervisor of the elementary satellite at Westerville South High School and we would like to offer her family a heartfelt appreciation for her service to the district and on behalf of the district, offer her family many thoughts and support. All told, these two long-serving educators served Westerville City Schools for 46 years. From the end of this school year, their collective service would take us back all the way to 1980. In what became known as the Miracle on Ice, the U.S. Olympic hockey team defeated the heavily favored Soviets in the Lake Placid Winter Olympics. A few months later, we took our medals and went home as the U.S. decided to boycott the 1980 Summer Olympics in Soviet Moscow. America turned to Hollywood and elected a movie star as president. Mount St. Helens blew her top. And a certain chief personnel and policy officer who won't be named, suffered many days of punishment for stuffing his lunch money in the new game that took the world by storm, Pac-Man. I'm happy, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Oh, thank you. Are there any questions?
I would just like to know if you used your real initials for your Pac-Man high score or it shows like ace or something?
Oh, no. I wanted SR at the top, so.
Well, thank you. Ms. Marshall, will you take the vote?
Mr. Hackelman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ottman?
Yes.
Mrs. Leebin?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes. And tonight, there's no old business or new business. So moving along to recommend an action, may I have a motion to approve the donations as presented?
So moved.
Second. And Ms. Marshall, will you talk to us about this? Very, all these very generous donations.
Yes, we're very grateful. We have a very generous community and appreciate it very much. So the current request value is $79,398.32. That brings our fiscal year-to-date total to $103,286.04. And just to note, prior year total received was $403,71.56. The other thing I would like to note is part of this list includes, Lyndon Middle School has a large donation of $55,000 for renovating the gym that has not been received yet, so this is approval in advance so that they can start that work. It's projected to be completed over the summer, so they're doing some work.
Over Christmas break, I think.
Oh, wait, you're right. Over winter break, I apologize. The work's projected to be completed over winter break and it's part of the gymnasium, updating the gymnasium, various things.
Any questions? Incredibly generous. Yeah. Thank you. Okay.
Mr. Hackelman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ottman?
Yes.
Mrs. Leebin?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes. And may I have a motion to approve out-of-state overnight field trips?
So moved. Second. And Ms. Marshall, oh, Ms. Asher, welcome. Will you please talk to us about these?
Good evening. Tonight, I have two out-of-state overnight field trips to present for your consideration. The first trip is from the Central High School baseball team. They would like to travel to Cocoa Beach, Florida during spring break where they will play six games. The second trip is open to sixth-grade students from all five middle schools. They would like to provide the opportunity for students to travel to New York City in May after the school year has ended. The estimated cost to the districts for both trips is zero and students will not miss any school days. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? All right. Will you please take the vote?
Mrs. Leebin?
Yes.
Mrs. Ottman?
Yes.
Mr. Hackelman?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes. And this is an exciting one. May I have a motion to approve the early graduate candidate amended from October 13th board meeting who has completed all local and state requirements?
So moved.
Second. Ms. Asher, will you please talk to us about this?
Yes. Tonight, I have an amendment to our candidates for early graduation who were approved on October 13th. We have one student from Central High School who is on track to complete all required coursework and meet all state and board requirements prior to his cohort's scheduled graduation. I'm requesting approval from the Board of Education for early graduation for this student, contingent upon successful completion of all remaining requirements.
Any questions? All right. Congratulations.
Yep.
Congratulations. Would you please take the vote?
Mr. Hackelman?
Yes.
Mrs. Leebin?
Yes.
Mrs. Ottman?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes. And next up, we have board comments. Who'd like to go first?
I'm happy to go first. I just want to reiterate, we said it earlier, but the MTSS work is so important in our district and I appreciate us taking time to go through that this evening. And I know it can be a little bit confusing, you know, when I first was hearing about it, trying to understand what does that actually mean for my child in the classroom. So I just encourage families to talk to teachers, talk to building principals, you know, if you're not understanding it, talk to your kid about what their experience is during the day. But it is really us trying to meet every kid where they are. And so it is hard to summarize and encapsulate in a sentence or two because it means lots of different things for lots of kids. So just really appreciative of Ms. Toma and the coaches and our staff supporting this work and our administration supporting this work. But please do ask questions about what that actually looks like on the ground because it is a little hard to wrap your head around, but it's, I really believe in it and it's really important for our, for our students. So, thank you.
So we covered a lot of ground tonight and I want to thank everyone who, from Mr. Cooper and our MTSS support team on the line to superintendent for filling us in on a lot of information tonight. I think the takeaway that I got from our conversations was there's clearly a, if you didn't know this, there's clearly a disconnect between what the state assesses and what the student needs. I think that became obvious tonight and we talked about MTSS and a student with a disability who needed one-to-one time with a teacher in the classroom and then additional external tutor outside of the classroom, well, that's resources, right? We have to have another teacher in the classroom or an aide to watch over the other five kids if we're going to support MTSS and then we need another teacher and another aide, right, to take care of that student outside the classroom. So all that requires funding, right? And the state hasn't done a great job supporting that for us. So along that line, I want to thank everyone who showed up through these last three meetings to voice their concerns about the upcoming ballot issue. I think it's easy for some people to sit back and say, cut this or cut that, but, you know, what gets lost in there, there's real people on the other side of those cuts who are, most of whom are taking part in this district, not because they seek to make the most income, but because they understand what a special place we have here in Westerville in our school system. And what's more, of course, is those cuts will affect all our kids, every student in every classroom. And they're going to affect those kids the most, who are probably most vulnerable, unfortunately. And we heard tonight how school was a safe place for some people here and the last thing we want to do is, is detract from that. So, you know, as we close up right before we go to the polls next week, just please take all that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you all so, so much. I mean, I think I definitely want to end tonight with a lot of gratitude. We, as you shared, got two really insightful pieces of information on various important topics and so I really want to thank our district leaders who provided that presentations, those presentations, excuse me. And I really just want to thank you all for sitting through that 2.5, you know, hours. I mean, that's a very long time. I know it's Monday, we could all be doing a lot of other things, but just your, and many of you have returned, this isn't your first night, so really, really thank you so much for being advocates and being civically engaged. I think that that's always important. I want to, of course, congratulate, as always, our retirees who tonight, we've learned, combined, are leaving with 146 years of service. That's incredible. And I want to thank our PTAs, I captured it really quickly, but I think I heard 125 hours, 125,000 hours of support in our building, so that's just incredible and I'm always grateful for that. And I really just want to, I guess, end with acknowledging that despite our limited resources, challenges facing cuts to vital funding, attack on our public education, constant changes to the state measures that we heard tonight, we really are making progress on a lot of these component areas and many areas that just weren't discussed tonight. And we're addressing real issues together and so I'm very grateful for that. And then just finally, really, I just want to thank our district staff who have spent the past several months literally preparing this data, have spent, who have worked really tirelessly to get us very clear, transparent information on a reduced reduction list or proposed reduction list. That takes a lot of time and I know I found it very helpful even as a board member. I mean, I know many people have found that helpful since I've been on the ground and so just really thank you to everybody.
Well, I won't repeat, so I'll just echo that comment. I just, I want to thank Mr. Cooper and Mr. Meisner and the whole team for breaking down that black box called the state report card. Really appreciate that. And I'm also really excited about MTSS and I know when, although we need a better acronym for it, I'm just going to say. But want to also extend my thanks to the staff. You know, I know the staff is working really hard. There's a lot going on. You know, there's a lot on the line, but there's also a lot happening down at the State House and we heard some of that tonight, too. And I want to remind us that we are here because of the State House and because of the fact that they continue to underfund us. 18% of our state funds right now, right? We're only getting 18% state funding, the state share. It will go down to 11%. So we are here because of that and we continue to hear these potential risks from the federal government of even cutting back more. So it's not like, I would just ask that you take into all of this into consideration too. And just really want to thank everybody in the buildings, too. There is, like I said, there's a lot going on and I think the kids feel it, too, but there's a lot of really great things that are happening. I know marching bands just got superiors last Saturday. I know soccer teams, you know, won their championships. There's so many great things that are happening in our district and I encourage you to go out and just be part of them, what I call those glimmers. So with that, I will end my comments and just move along to the end. Okay. The board will meet in regular session on Monday, November 24th, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. at the Early Learning Center. So we're going back to 936 Eastwind Drive, Westerville, Ohio 43081. And I really appreciate all of you staying and coming out. Thank you so much. And with that, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
And will you take the vote?
Mrs. Ottman?
Yes.
Mr. Hackelman?
Yes.
Mrs. Leebin?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes. Thank you.